There we are.
Really touching.
There you go.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, December 8th, 2016. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good evening, everybody. It's so nice to look out there and see such a big crowd. I love it. I love it. Okay, we're going to begin the meeting with our consent agenda. We have several meetings that we need to approve. We need to approve regular session minutes of November 17th, 2016, governance minutes of June 30th, 2016, governance minutes of August 22nd, 2016, governance minutes of September 23rd, 2016, start school later minutes of November 28th, 2016, budget finance minutes of November 14th, 2016, budget finance minutes of November 28th, 2016, and acceptance of Warrens 23 V 17 and 22 P 17.
That's a lot of minutes.
That is.
Busy, busy people.
Getting caught up.
So moved.
Second.
Great.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have Michaela here tonight to talk about what's going on at school. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Okay, so, uh, winter sports are starting up and, um, our basketball team and wrestling team are supposed to be really good this year, so that's exciting. And, um, I know that there's a group on Facebook that's, um, trying to revive the Blue Crew, uh, like fan section, cause it kinda died out a little bit, but it's coming back, so.
The Blue Crew fan section, is that?
For the basketball games.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, so, um, and then I know, um, the Drama Club is working really hard on their, um, Shrek the Musical. I'm not personally in it, but I have a lot of friends that are in it and they're all so excited and they're saying it's gonna be a really good show. And I know the Drama Fest just held auditions for their play, I kinda forget the name of it, but they're, um, competing in March, and so that's gonna be really exciting and I want a lot of people to go to that, cause it's gonna be fun.
Do you know where it is?
Um, last year.
Ipswich, right?
Last year, one was at Ipswich and, um, one was in North Sandover, I believe.
Okay.
Um, and I believe it'll probably be the same this year.
Okay, that's good. And the concerts were last night.
Mm-hmm. And I wish I could go, but I didn't have time, but, um, they were saying they, like, did really good and I know the a cappella club was so good, so.
Yeah. Yeah, all, all three of them were very impressive, the, uh, I, I love the a cappella.
So cool.
That last number they did was really special, I thought.
It's always nice to, um, see so many talented kids out there.
Yeah.
Really, it was good, and so many parents, there was tons of people there.
It was very.
Which is always so nice.
There's still a couple concerts coming up, right? So there's, there's the middle school coming up, Pembroke's concert and, um, the band, male high school band is coming up, so.
Every Wednesday, from now until?
I think through Wednesdays, yeah, yeah.
Now until break?
Yes.
Wow. I'm glad Osby's early.
It's cool, cause like, we come from such a small school and there's so much talent and like, the, like, small amount of people we have, so.
Yeah, it is good. Well, that's good, are you excited for the upcoming holiday break? Me too. Okay, good, thank you, Michaela. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that wants to talk about anything on the agenda? Okay, we have, uh, Mike Anderson here to talk about some fees.
So we have been working, um, on, with the budget and finance subcommittee, uh, as well as, um, you know, our internal groups, on, uh, looking at potential revenue generation. Um, we also have looked at our fee structure and realized that we really haven't increased fees in a number of years. Uh, we anticipate the budget this year might be a little tight, so we're thinking that this might be a year to take a look at them. We're only gonna talk to you tonight about the facilities use fees, but at another date, we're, um, wanna come back and talk a little bit more about preschool and some of our, um, extended day maybe and, um, uh, enrichment, um, just going up slightly on those fees, but also talking about athletic user fees and potentially, and I know, I know, and potentially, um, bus fees. Again, these are all discussions that we're involved in, no final decisions have been made or recommendations, it's just, we're, we're, we're wrestling with some of those ideas and trying to determine if it makes sense and if we did it, how much revenue would we perhaps be able to raise that might be able to offset if we end up having to make reductions to the budget, cause obviously our goal is to keep a level services, um, program as much as we possibly can. So, so Mike is here to talk about what, uh, what we've kind of come up with in terms of looking at facilities use. The lights have become more of a, of a cost than we thought they were going to be. For example, Julie just let us know that this last month, just one month alone, was, was it $1,200? $1,200, and that's using the lights basically every night, right? So, um, you know, that, that would be concerning, it won't happen all the time, obviously there's only certain, winter won't, won't even be a problem, right? And much of the spring isn't a problem, but you know, this time of the fall, cause it gets dark so early, certainly, you know, we do expect that we're gonna have some.
But that would be like, just two months.
Well, that's what we, we need to look at is over the course of the year, we're comparing it to what it was last year. It's a little higher this year than last year, but I think that's the only way we're gonna kinda come to what is the real cost, you know, um, so we just have.
So what was it last year?
It was less last year, I don't have the exact figure, but it was definitely less last year.
Like significantly less, like, has it doubled?
Enough so, enough so Julie commented on it, right?
Okay, yeah.
You know, if it was, you know, a, a small amount, I don't think Julie would've brought it to our attention, but she specifically sent us an email saying, just so you know, the cost was significantly higher this month.
The, the use has grown tremendously, like how many people are using it.
Yes, that's exactly what we want.
But in, um, that's just GAA and.
And Georgetown schools, yeah. So with the use of facilities, I researched a lot of sound surrounding schools and towns and we are, in some cases, losing money because we charge so little. We're way under everybody else as far as what they charge. Uh, I created kind of a draft fee schedule on the low side, but more in line with everybody else. And I know we're, we're here for the community, but we also can't lose money from the school's budget to, to do all these things.
So our custodial fees that we always have chosen, have charged in the past, at one point were on the high end, now they don't, now they don't cover the cost of the custodian to do it. So the fee that we're, we're looking at here is, will cover, will cover the custodial, actual pay, to actually pay the custodian in full. Um, we didn't have any fees in the past for the artificial turf. We had been talking, I think we talked about, um, $50 at one point, that was our rental fee, and then on top of it, the lights were $15 an hour. But in, as Mike said, in researching, um, remember, we don't have stadium seating, so we, we have to keep that in mind. And when we first started talking about building the turf field, we, we really didn't have much competition, but now surrounding towns, most surrounding towns now have, have actually got a turf field, so, um, we wanna be able to advertise it, but we wanna be able to keep it in, in the range that
Yeah, we wanna be competitive.
we feel is gonna be competitive, but also acknowledging that we don't maybe have all of the facilities that maybe everybody else might.
Do most of the, um, other facilities have stadium, like what? Does Triton, does the new Triton field?
Yes.
So they have?
They have a field house in a Triton, yeah, they do, they have a stadium. I think we're really the only one, Barbie, to be honest with you, that doesn't have a stadium.
So Manchester Essex has a couple of, uh, turf fields, and I know one of them doesn't have stadium, the little soccer field there.
But I know Linfield does, Amesbury, I'm trying to think of other places that we, that we play, that I've been, that Bishop Fenwick, any of those kind of private schools, they have, they have the seating.
Is it Penn Tucket or Triton?
Penn Tucket.
Triton that has the.
Triton just had, put a new field in and they, they do have seating. Right, I don't know about Penn Tucket, does Penn Tucket have a turf field?
Oh, it's, I get the two mixed up, Penn Tucket and Triton now.
I, I, last time I went to a Penn Tucket field, they had, they did have, say, stadium seating.
And Ipswich does.
Yeah, Ipswich has a beautiful stadium.
Yeah. Danvers, Danvers does, now, I mean, we don't play Danvers, but Dan, they just put a turf field in and they, they do.
Is, I guess when I saw this, I was surprised that the, the cost difference for the grass fields to the turf field, it's only 15 bucks. Is that, is that be solely because we don't have seating? Is that what's, I guess I expected the turf field to be that much more, in my mind, and maybe that was just.
Both good to play on and they're in good condition, we were just trying to make it as fair as possible. And we have multiple grass fields, so.
Okay.
You know, uh.
If, and I guess my, my other question is if our rates were so low, it seems to me like we should be so busy that we're turning people away.
We don't advertise.
We've never advertised. So that's part of our interest in bringing them to you is so that you could, and then our plan would be to distribute this, you know, through guy to the various ADs, to, you know, through whatever vehicles we can, to, so people put it right up on our website, you know, if you're interested in renting our fields, here's our information. We just never have, if people have come to us, we've given them a price, but we've never really aggressively advertised.
Part of it is we're gonna have more fields coming online with Pembroke, so we'll have some space, because before, everything's been booked either between GAA or Georgetown squads, so there isn't any room for anybody else. But with all these new fields coming online, we're hoping to have room and, you know, make some, some kind of money to maintain them.
So is it official that those Pembroke fields will be online this spring?
Yes.
Definitely, uh.
Not all of them.
Definitely two of them.
Yeah, the, the north fields, which, which are the previous fields that were re, redone, they will be, the others will be this following spring.
Yeah.
About, wait, fall.
Because you have to rotate them?
Uh, because it was, it was planted later, so it, it needs so long to, uh.
You have to give them two growing seasons.
Right.
Two full growing seasons.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm excited to see how that works out and just to see the, the, uh, the various, um, sporting teams.
Yeah, be able to move around and.
And our upper fields are in probably the best shape they've been in because they have not been overused, we've rested them.
Yeah, I do, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, we've been seeding them and fertilizing them.
The upper field was definitely.
Yeah, my brother.
Impressive this year. The line, lining wasn't that great.
We did work with the GAA to, to get a, to get a, um, potentially get a CPC planning grant to do a study on the upper fields to see what we could do to perhaps even change the layout or, um, get some additional fields, but they weren't able to fund it this year, we just found out, we just got an email today on that, but they encouraged us to, you know.
Keep going.
Submit it again, you know, cause, you know, you never know what kind of competition you're facing, you know, when you put those things in, so. So, you know, we were encouraged to, to, to try it again. See, the, one of the challenges is the bond is still outstanding on the, on the turf field, right? So I think there's some reluctance not to take on any additional work on fields until some, till that bond is nearly done or done, so I think that played into it as, as well as the fact that there were just other competing projects that, that they needed to fund.
So Mike, what do these other facilities charge with the stadium?
They cha, a lot of them charge without the lights, 150 an hour, so.
Without lights?
Yeah.
So we may need to increase fees again, right? But at least we felt we had some room to grow, like, you know, like to put it in writing, advertise it, see what we get.
To see what the response is.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're really hoping that in the summer, just in the summer alone, if we could rent it for six to eight weeks to different places that wanted to do camps, you know, we, we could make enough money probably to afford the lights for the year. You know, I mean, that's kinda how we're looking at it, is that summer is really an opportunity for us, if we can get this stuff out early enough before decisions are made by groups that might be interested in that, maybe we'll have some success.
Do most schools, um, rent out their kitchen?
Yes, some, I mean, some are renting every square inch as much as they can.
We got that idea because of Rebecca's Nut Free.
Is that still happening?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
Great.
Again, we might not have any interest, you know, in that, but if we did, we at least wanted to be able to say we had a price for it.
Do you want to say anything else about it?
No, unless you have any questions. I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah. Mike did a lot of work on it, though.
I know, we appreciate that, Mike.
Definitely.
I'm sure I'm contacting all these schools and.
We need to have fees in lines with other districts.
Yeah.
And we need to, you know.
Not, not lose money, as you said.
Yeah.
And we have a beautiful new turf field, too, that we'd like others to come and enjoy.
I mean, all of our facilities are in great shape now, all of them, right? I mean, they have all of the renovations, the brand new Pembroke, you know, Pearlie's in, in great shape and, and now we're working on the outside, so we might as well give people an opportunity to use them if we can.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedule for use of facilities as presented by Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Mike Anderson. So moved, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks for doing all that research, appreciate it.
Have a great, thank you.
You too. Okay, we have our athletic director, Mr. Prescott, to talk about the fall sports. Eventually. Thanks for coming out tonight.
No problem.
We appreciate that.
Guys, guys have to, has to be at the football banquet when he's done here, so.
All right, we'll get you out. Did it just start at seven?
Yeah. I did include in your packet, um, some awards in the back, so please don't read those on air. They haven't been awarded yet, I gave you the football and chair ones, if you, if you didn't notice.
Impressive.
So.
Call it more impressive.
Very, very.
So the, uh, athletic fall summary, I'll briefly touch on each team and then be open for some questions. Uh, I am here for another reason, I'll explain at the end, uh, when we get there, uh, but the football team.
Surprise?
No, it's not a surprise, no. You're well aware, I believe. The, uh, football team had an excellent season, they finished six and four, qualified for the Division Four North, North Tournament. We, um, had a, an excellent season, probably the best year we've had in 10 years. Yep, so it's our first year of going independent, so, um, if you noticed in here, some of the awards that we did get for other sports are Cape Ann League awards, so the only problem with going independent is we don't have a league, so we can't be nominated for those types of awards, but.
I'd rather take the more wins.
Yeah, yeah, overall, uh, overall, it was, it was a good experience. We did have some difficulty with scheduling, um, which I, I would imagine would continue a little bit, uh, because when we do the league schedule, we also qualify for the sub-varsity schedules and, and we didn't have that going into the season, so we really scrambled a lot to, to try to, um, match up with teams our size and, and try to stay as local as possible. Uh, we did travel, varsity traveled to Pembroke, uh, one day and it was a good matchup for us, but it was, it was pretty costly overall.
I bet.
You know, with.
It was a rainy day.
Yeah, it was a bad rainy day, we, yeah, we take two buses, so, you know, we're looking at that, uh, for next year, trying to stay a little more local. That was more out of necessity to get, you know, to get the games in, but a lot of teams do play 11 games, we chose to play 10 games, so I think that kinda offsets it overall. Our participation numbers were good, they were up from last year, so that was encouraging, and the underclassmen did excellent, they had a, they had a great year. We played, um, some, mostly at the freshman level, but we, we did play some teams that had some sophomores, so it was like a lower junior varsity level, and there is some discussion amongst the Cape Ann League of, um, changing the way they view their sub-varsity levels, so that instead of having varsity, junior varsity and freshmen, there's talk of having a varsity and, um, like a JV one, JV two, where it gives you a little more flexibility, you know, based on, uh, numbers and, and grades, you know, so you know, when we're, when you play a freshman level, everybody has to be from freshman and below and, and then there's a gap sometimes and then, you know, our numbers in all sports are, are light, so, you know, we pull some people up from, uh, the eighth grade or the freshman to the JV level.
Which is scary.
Yeah, it is, but in our league, it's, it's pretty common that, that, you know, I, we had a meeting yesterday with Cape Ann League and, and it's very common, everybody's kinda in, in our boat, except for the very large teams, um, that they're full on all their levels. So we, we are gonna continue that discussion, it does make sense, uh, for a lot of us and it, and it makes sense, um, you know, if you, if you just look at basketball, so in tryouts, you know, you, you're really not trying out for the freshman team or the junior varsity team, you're trying out for the sub-varsity teams, and then based on your, your ability and talent, the coaches would separate those. So the, um, JV one would be a little more talented season and, and they could be any of the grades, not just, you know, the, uh, you know, ninth grade or below. So, and then the second team would be lesser experienced kids, so the competition level is what we're, we're trying to, to balance across the board. So it's something that, if you hear some of that talk, uh, we are looking into that, so.
The only thing we are also paying attention, though, too, is to sort of the social developmental needs of the kids, because we, we wouldn't overall, as a rule of thumb, wanna have 13-year-olds, you know, hanging around all of the time with 17 and 18-year-olds, just because of the social differences. It may be that their academic, their, um, sports talent is consistent, you know, they're, they can play up, but that's always something we've always tried to really pay attention to before we just, you know, universally put kids into situations like that.
Well, and can I just ask, um, you know, about their physical safety as well, did we have fewer concussions this year than last year, or?
Uh, I don't think so.
You know, I, I just wanted to.
I don't, I don't think we had more, we, we had a lot of concussions, we really, we really did.
Yeah.
And it's, it's.
Do you think it's, it's just that they're more, we're more, um.
Aware of it.
Aware of it and that, I mean, I hate to say it, that maybe the kids suffered concussions and they weren't, well, probably treated.
Yeah, yeah.
But it does seem like a lot of kids had concussions.
Well, I could say, I could say this, I've suffered many concussions and I wasn't.
I don't believe you.
I, I raised the question.
So now, I think it's a good thing that they're, uh, they're taking care of these people, you know, so they can live happy, long lives.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I raised the question on, I know we put a lot of, you know, safety measures into place.
Yeah, we, we really have.
And we have the helmets and all that, but I found, I heard of an idea on television that I'd never heard of before, which is tackle dummies, like in practice, you've probably heard of them, and we probably don't have the money for them right now, but I just wanted to.
No, but we use some, we use some of those, we use some of those philosophies in practice. Uh, I, I would say a practice today is so much different than a practice 10 years ago.
Tackle, so you're not tackling in practice.
Right, tackling the dummies.
These, yeah.
Not just like a student that you call a dummy.
Okay.
No, but to answer your question honestly, um, you know, medically, we've come a long way and, uh, just the safeguards, as you're saying, that we, we do have around our athletes, so we are erring on the side of caution at all times and, you know, it has to be done, and we.
We have those new helmets and everything, though, that's why I'm just surprised.
But the, even with the helmets, if, if you run straight forward into that wall with, with a, an astronaut's helmet, it's not just what's protecting you, it's your brain moving towards the skull is what's causing the, the damage, so. It is force, and these, you know, kids are getting bigger, faster, stronger and they're running full speed, you know, sometimes it's hard to avoid.
So we don't have any tackle dummies here, is that right?
We do, we have, yeah, we do, yeah.
We have those, what do you call those?
But we don't, I, the one that you're, you're talking about is very specific, it's on a, it's on a wire and you push it and then you use it to tackle, we have kids carrying that thing.
Okay.
And then you tackle and you let it go, or we have it standing position and you run and use form tackling on it. But I, I know from, from watching our practices to what I used to coach or play under, we used to be live all the time, you know, 10, 15 years ago, or in my case, probably longer, but, um, it was, it was live bodies all the time. Now, it's progressing to, they can't afford to do it, even with, with our numbers, if we went live all the time, you know, we wouldn't have enough kids to practice, everybody's hurt, so the coaches are aware of that, everybody's aware of that, you know. It's when you do get out and, and actually participate, that's when we're getting hit. Plus, soccer is, we've had more soccer concussions, you know, just as many as we had with, uh, with football, which, cause they're using their head so much, they're, they're heading the ball, so. Uh, moving on, girls soccer, um, they finished, I, I'm just gonna comment on mainly the varsities, finished with a 412 and two season, uh, we did welcome Courtney Orego, she moved from field hockey to soccer and our coaching staff, and we're happy to have her. Uh, boys soccer finished, uh, very similarly, 413 and one. Volleyball, which was vast, uh, new sport for varsity this year, uh, they finished at two and 14, so they did establish the first two wins of, of a, a varsity volleyball team. We did have two teams, we had varsity and junior varsity, and our numbers were really good, we're a co-op and, um, you know, we'd like to remain a co-op until we have enough to support two levels like the, the other team, so I think we're still gonna be interested in that.
So guy, with those 37, with that 37 number for volleyball.
Yeah.
How many were ours?
I would say it's, it's close to half.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
And did I hear somebody say that you're looking into a boys volleyball, possibly?
Uh, I am not, no.
Have you heard that, though?
Yeah, I've heard that, yeah.
You heard that you are?
But, but, but kids have shown interest?
Yeah, they've been, they've been talking about it, so, you know, the way that works, we're always listening to, to what they say, but they would have to come up with a petition and show me numbers and, and we'd have to look and see what that does.
Brushes.
Yeah, you know, in the, in, and they play, they play in the, in the, um, fall. I, I believe their season's the fall.
Volleyball usually is.
Yeah, no, maybe it's the spring then, I think they're in opposite season, the boys.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, well, yeah, if the girls were.
Girls are in the fall.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at it closely to see, you know, the numbers, who would be interested, to see if they're coming from a different program and what that, what does that do to the other programs, cause we don't wanna diminish all of our programs, yeah, and.
We certainly have seen that, right, you start in a new program, all of a sudden the numbers start falling.
Yeah, when Mr. Lucius started the lacrosse program, uh, a few years ago, um, we had that, we've had these debates about how it's gonna, you know, decimate the baseball program. Well, we recovered nicely and, uh, we're still, our numbers in both programs are still a little light, so, you know, it's year to year, you know, the.
Lacrosse is becoming unpopular.
Yeah.
But soccer, boys soccer was a little light.
They were.
Started out that way anyway.
They were, and then they, they experienced some injuries and some concussions and they got real light.
Yeah.
So that was a concern, we're only two, we're only two levels of boys soccer, so I'm not sure what's going on there. I do, you know, I see millions of soccer players on the turf field, I don't know where they end up when they get to high school, but we're gonna, you know, keep our eyes on that.
Yeah, GAA has a very strong feeder.
They do.
Very.
They do, but for some reason the interest drops off, that is not, as they get older.
I know.
I don't know why, cause we've got excellent programs for soccer.
Well, I, I mean, we can, we can look into it, right?
Right, we're gonna keep our eye on that.
Ask the kids, they'll tell you why.
We're gonna look at, we're gonna look at what's going on there, I'd love to see the numbers rebound back to have at least two. I'd love to see the numbers rebound back to have, uh, at least two strong programs. I'm, I'm not, uh, overly optimistic to say we'll have a third program, obviously at this point. But some teams do and, uh, we'd like to have two full programs. Uh, the golf team, uh, they finished, um, at oh and eleven. That, that is not surprising. Um, they, um, they didn't have a, a very successful record wise program last year as well, but they did compete very well. They had some great, they had some good players. We've had some excellent players go through the program in the last, you know, five or six years. So, uh, our numbers there are up.
Right, you actually had to.
We had, we had to make cuts.
Yeah, that's great.
We had over thirty kids, uh, come out, which was, which was amazing. I, I think that, you know, the last couple of years, the numbers were very light and it was just a shock, surprise to us. And then we had to adjust and we did have to cut. Um, our field hockey program finished at five, twelve and one. Uh, we welcome there, uh, Rudy Cudmore. She, she, uh, coached for us on the JV level and she did an excellent job and we were very happy to have her. And kids spoke very highly of her and her efforts as well as the rest of the coaching staff. Um, that, that, um, record is up from last year, so they've been slowly, um, building their, uh, program. It looks like, uh, continued success in the future. Uh, the cross country team, um, we welcome Pat Core to the, to the staff as an assistant to replace Heather Torrey, who stepped down prior to the season. Uh, they had, their numbers are up and they've been up for a few years. Um, and, and in my opinion, the, the experience that those kids are getting is just excellent, you know. The camaraderie and, and the, um, and the spirit of, of those guys has been, has been awesome with those big numbers. So they've done a great job. Uh, Coach Basies has done an excellent job with the, with those guys. So we're looking to see continued success there. And our cheering program, uh, as you could see, they won the Cape Anne League championship in the coed division. They also won the division four championship, uh, for the North. Uh, they were second place. They were runner-ups in the state tournament in the, uh, at Tantascua High School. And I can tell you, I went to the state tournament meet and they, they were unbelievable. It was, it was, they hit every routine and it was just spectacular. So, uh, they deserve, uh, everything that they've gotten. And my last thing that I was gonna talk to, talk to you about was, uh, they're asking for, uh, approval and permission to represent Georgetown in the national tournament in Orlando, Florida in February from the school committee. So it's an out of state, overnight, out of state, uh, weekend long trip that they're asking for permission to attend.
Is that the, is that right before February vacation? Those dates didn't look from the, the tenth to the thirteenth.
That's before.
That's, that's the week before?
It's a Friday through Monday. Um, they would, they would miss two days of school, the Friday and the Monday as travel days.
Okay, so it's not vacation.
Yeah, February vacation is the week of the twentieth. They've been at Pearly practicing. Yeah, they have, that's where they, they do, they're doing their practice, so it's been fun. And I hear them, I'll go down and, and watch.
So currently Coach Wood is, is doing the winter cheering practices and the national team practice. She's keeping it alive, so they, they're not the same people.
No.
Um, and they do different things at this point. So she's, um, she's doing, she's doing both, uh, practices and she's done obviously an excellent job, um, so far. And just to the initial, um, organization of, of looking into this possibility, she's done an amazing job of, of getting us to where we are today.
So we're hoping they'll be able to go, right? It's a pretty hefty price, right? So, you know, but they need approval to go forward with even, you know, starting to collect money.
It looks like they have a good, um, good idea of fundraising.
Yes, but February comes quick.
Yeah, no, it does come quick. I know, but what a great.
Right around the corner.
What a great opportunity.
Oh, it is. It's phenomenal.
Do you know that the partners of Georgetown football, uh, uh, are very interested in helping Coach Wood? Cause the, the girls do help with some fundraising during the football season. Uh, both programs do a lot of things together. They've, they've been willing to, uh, to help in any capacity that they can. So it is, uh, an already, like, uh, it's a fundraising arm that's organized and, um, you know, they, they pledge their support to, to help, you know, us kinda.
That's excellent. I do know that guy. That's perfect.
That's great.
That would really help to bring those costs down.
Yeah, well, I think that's great that they've come that far. And I know that, um, Tracy's done a great job with the program too. I, I appreciate all her time and effort. Yeah, she's very passionate about it, which is good. And obviously the kids are too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I will make a motion to approve the request for the cheerleaders from Georgetown to attend the national competition in Orlando, Florida from February tenth, twenty seventeen through February thirteenth, twenty seventeen. So move.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
I wish them the best.
Well, thank you very much. Should be thrilled to hear that. And lastly, uh, we did have one last addition to the athletic department and I'd be remiss not to mention this. Uh, we did, uh, hire Cheryl O'Larry as the new athletic secretary. And she has done a, an amazing job in a very short period of time, you know, from everything, from the user fees and the purchase orders and the awards and certificates and.
And now on to the person that will rent the beautiful field. I saw that.
Yeah, and the fields, uh, she, she's, she's done a great job. She's jumped in, you know, and, um, she, she's a very quick learner and she's very personable and easy to get along with. And she's a nice face to the athletic program, a nice friendly face. So we wish her the best of luck and she has to put with me on a daily basis, so.
Wish her the best of luck.
So hopefully she continues in that position.
And I love, I love seeing Joanne too.
She's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, having you.
Always another friendly face that I love to see, yes, yeah. So that's good. Okay. Well, I hope the winter sports.
Okay, thank you very much.
I hope winter sports does just as good.
It looks good. Michaela said it. Uh, she's, she's right on. Well, you know, we have a new, uh, basketball coaching staff and, um, the wrestling team was very strong last year. They looked, looked to be just as strong, so we're looking for great things and, and, um.
Is Ryan still the coach of wrestling?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Oh, he does a great job too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, enjoy the banquet. Exciting. Thank you.
That's great. I'm very proud of those cheerleaders.
Yes.
Okay, we have.
What's that?
Uh, technology we're gonna talk about.
Right.
We're very excited to have all of these people here.
Oh, yeah.
So Colin, why don't you come up and I don't know who you're gonna bring with you, or are you coming on your own or what?
I'll fly solo for the first couple of minutes.
Okay.
But then I'll cede the floor quickly to our teachers.
Okay, wonderful. So one of the things we talked about with strategic goals was technology. As you know, that's a focus area unto itself. And this is also part of our, my goals, the district's goals, you know, so it's like work. This is one of the things where we're connecting the dots here. And we thought that while Colin's getting set up, that one of the things that would be important, um, would be to involve teachers who might be interested and willing to help. Um, we have the privilege of seeing many wonderful things within the schools that are going on with technology integration. But you wouldn't have that opportunity, um, sitting in the role that you, that you sit in. So the first thing Colin did is he went out and he, he put out a Google Doc, cause he's a big Google Doc guy. Um, he put out a Google Doc and he got some wonderful, um, submissions from teachers. And I think if you had a chance to read through them, you saw there's, there's like a, a great di, you know, diverse, uh, number of ways that they're being used from communication to instruction to, um.
I think younger kids, it was amazing to see grades one, two, three, you know.
Yeah, we, uh, I was at the school committee meeting at, uh, at Pembroke yesterday and we had a few teachers talking about all the ways from the pre-K at Pearly all the way through, through the elementary and as you see in, in the high school, which we're gonna talk about today. Um, how, all the different ways that, that technology is being utilized. So really I, I made a really simple form for teachers to fill out and sent a really simple email saying, if you get two minutes, please add to this document. And just the influx of responses on top of what people had already sent me, had already shared with me. And, um, it was, it was really impressive, not just in the quantity, but in all of the different ways that people are using technology and integrating it and the way that it's helping teachers and students organize their classrooms, make sure students are engaged, make sure that they're creating authentic products and projects. And, um, the idea of, of technology integration, we want to kind of continue and, and make the next step. Um, as we're gonna propose later tonight with the one-to-one initiative, but without, it's really important that everyone hear about the great stuff that's already happening in Georgetown schools so that we all know that this is the logical next step in, in really furthering the technology with a one-to-one program at middle high school. Although the technology's not cooperating with me at the moment. The light's on?
Maybe we can go get the guy.
That's always been a toughie.
Here he comes. Yeah, he sees me. He's usually our hero. He comes out and helps us out.
Hi there.
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Could use your help. Thank you.
No, nothing. Light's on. Mike says there's a light on. No, it's not gonna help much.
No, yeah, do we do the one on the back? Ooh.
Hmm, I just don't think that bulb is working. We have to set this on before the meeting for this very reason.
Got it.
So we might have to see how we do this without technology.
Yeah. Exact presentation.
Might as well demonstrate how important technology is.
Yeah, for sure, for real.
I have to go to Plan B. So Colin, just while.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So while, so after we, we look at this wonderful presentation, we're then going to talk to some teachers?
Yep, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna take you through, I had so many teachers, you know, Mr. Lucia sent an email out, um, just saying, hey, if you, if you're doing anything cool in your class, send it to Colin. And then I got a ton of emails from teachers and I said, if you have a picture, if you have a video that you can send along with it, by all means. And I wanna quickly present on just some of the ideas that teachers sent me, um, but then really let classroom teachers kind of present something that they're specifically doing in their class that has really helped them in their planning or their instruction or their organization or their really whatever. Um, and then also have a few, um, teachers talk about how they're working with other staff members to help them integrate technology more into their classrooms. So it's, so it really isn't, you know, open door policy and we're learning from each other, which really is, um, a cornerstone of, of a good integration and good one-to-one program.
Right.
But if that's not happening.
And then Sandra is here to talk about the pilot program.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I'm interested to hear about that.
With some of our students, I recognize a few faces. Thank you for being here. And then we'll get into the discussion about the one-to-one.
Now, is the pilot program leading up for the one-to-one to be for the entire school?
It's gonna be for.
Or just for a specific grade?
That's right, so we're.
And then after the specific grade, will it be for the school?
Yes, we're proposing a two-year rollout.
Okay.
Uh, seven, nine and ten next year. And then the following year, the seventh graders will have, will have, the eighth graders will have their, their iPads already.
Why not seniors, since they're the ones going off to college? Why wouldn't they benefit?
Well, they can bring their own, they, they're, we're not saying that anybody can't sign on to this. We're just saying that the teachers in the seventh, the ninth and the tenth grade are, all will have the ability to integrate technology like Sandra is doing in their classroom.
But again, I'm asking why not the seniors?
Well, and then just when they go to college, every college has different requirements and requests and they certainly don't all use or need iPads necessarily. I mean, so when you, your child goes to college, all of a sudden you need to buy a whole new set.
Ah, something's looking progress.
You know, you need a new, a new computer. I mean, like my son ended up with a Fujitsu. I mean, who, who would know? It's this crazy thing.
I don't care what the device is.
It's models also on a three-year lease.
Three-year lease, right.
So the, the seniors would have to buy it outright.
Got you. Oh, that's right, cause they're not allowed to bring their own.
Right, they, they.
They're allowed to bring their own.
Right. They, but, but if it's.
I don't mean their own, I meant any, right.
Right, but we're not saying anybody can, you know, take advantage of this opportunity. But as Michael said, you know, for some people in order to make it work, it's, you have to have three years to, to roll up and lease. Well, I thought that was progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Looked optimistic for a moment there.
Since you're going to have to buy a new device when the child goes to college, you might appreciate not having to buy.
No, I forgot about that part.
A device is, for them as a senior.
We, we talked about that though Suzanne, you know, cause, cause one of the things that does worry me a little bit is that we're doing the pilot with upperclassmen and then, you know, obviously they're not necessarily the ones that are going to be in this three-year lease because they're not gonna be there for three years if they're juniors, right?
Not even picking up to that.
But we wouldn't say to anybody, you can't, your family can't take advantage of this and, and they, they absolutely can't.
But the implementation in those classrooms would be a little spotty.
It would be coming from the, the teacher.
No, but you could still be able to use the app, you know, there'd be apps that you could, you could use.
But the teacher's not necessarily gonna.
The teacher's not necessarily gonna use it.
I mean, like, you know, Gregson Scott is not in any, um, pilot program here, but he's using Notify, the app. Well, I mean, you can see from this that all the teachers are using all, you know, apps.
Just come on up and you can help if you think you have a suggestion.
They've got, they've got the handouts.
Yeah, they won't be able to.
So, I mean, we'll.
I'm really sorry.
We'll keep trying to troubleshoot, but.
What, what do you think the problem is?
Honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure. This projector's known to give us little issues here and there.
It's been there for a long time, hasn't it?
Could it need, could it need to be heated? Could it need to heat up?
Could that be part of the problem?
Honestly, once, once the first screen that you saw earlier comes up, usually it should project right after that.
Yeah.
Well, we have some technology people here. You're welcome to think about it.
Thank goodness we still have paper, right?
I know.
You know, it's just hard for the outside audience.
I know.
Oh. No way the camera can go right on the paper.
No, well, it probably could, actually.
You know, we could zoom it in on the paper and hold that up for a few minutes.
This may be.
Are you volunteering?
This would be the paper holder. Could it be your, could it be your laptop, Colin?
Michael, it's usually like a button down there.
Yeah, it's usually, usually it's, it's not.
Usually. Is that like a?
So I wonder if, I wonder if we could maybe do some, Sandra, do you have something to project or were you gonna, were you gonna just?
Was something, was something gonna project that?
We're all gonna use work off his computer?
Yeah.
Got it. Is that accessible? A what? Well, that's what I asked about. Peter, do you have your computer? Could we try? You don't have it? Michael has his, but his is a Mac too and, and. Does anybody have just a regular, nobody does anything with PCs anymore, I guess, right? I don't have mine. Laura has hers.
Yeah.
I mean, do you, and I don't know if you wanna try it with a different computer, just to rule out that that's.
Where is the presentation on your?
It's just a Google slide, so I can put it on anything.
Okay, technology's wonderful when it works, right?
So perfect segue, Meg, right?
How do you troubleshoot? Who troubleshoots? When do we troubleshoot?
Where's Red Kelly?
Red, Red was here before.
Red is in the building. He's in this.
Red was here. We should maybe get Red.
See this and maybe like put in a purchase order for a new projector.
I know, what if Red is still here? He was in the building.
I know, he was.
He was sitting in the audience.
He was here. I didn't see him leave. I don't know why he left.
Well, I don't, I don't know. Maybe he was, thought he was at a different meeting.
Maybe they changed the input, yeah.
This would be a good moment for some good like elevator music.
You can cut that into the tape later, right?
Somebody can dance.
Right.
So Colin, at least when you were gathering all this data, what was the common theme running through it?
Um, when I, when we asked teachers what the benefits were, more, the, the most common benefit that we heard from teachers was that their students were way more engaged and really in the lesson and the content or the skills or standards that were being taught, gave them. was that their students were way more engaged and really in the lesson and the content, or the skills or standards that were being taught, gave them. Again, a lot of teachers wrote like, I felt like I was speaking their language, or they were able to express themselves in ways that they might not have been able to otherwise. So the idea of student engagement came up time and time again, and I'm sure you'll hear from some of the teachers that when they're working on a lesson or working through something that is using technology, their students are really, really with it and really engaged. And the more engaged students are, the more they're gonna grasp the content, the more that they're going to retain what they're learning and carry carry it with them, you know, outside of the classroom.
And is there professional development for the teachers to sort of get Google Classroom?
Yeah, so Google Classroom, there's been a lot of work, and Marion can talk to that, to that about some of the work that she's done at Penbrook a lot. And I know a lot of the teachers have mentioned at the middle high school that they're using Google Classroom or Google Docs at the, at the least. But, yeah, there is still some room to grow in in that area at the middle high school. But as far as PD, otherwise, we've had two PD sessions at the middle high school this year specific to technology integration. We worked with an outside agency called EdTech Teacher, which is basically classroom teachers that that have moved into the tech world and want to educate other educators about how to use technology. And we had a really successful half-day workshop, and then our last full day, we had EdTech Teacher teach half the staff while Ms. Marketti and Ms. Schwartzkopf taught the other half, and then after lunch, they just swapped and and did the same lesson again. And that was a really successful day, the evaluations that we got back from teachers were all really positive, I think more so for our our own in-house teachers. They really loved learning from from their peers, which was, which was great.
Which is why one of the things that we are all very committed to is working on getting an integration specialist and then working with high implementing teachers to maybe be a tech team in each school so that we can, you know, have the ability to touch a lot of teachers who might be, you know, interested in working together with other people. So I asked Peter if he would go to the high school and get a portable projector, thinking that maybe that's an alternative. Because I really would hate to see all the hard work that people did not get to be appreciated. And it doesn't appear that this projector's gonna.
In the meantime, I can talk you through a few of the slides that, you know, teachers aren't here for, and and I think, think I could do them justice by talking through what the slides are.
Can we turn the lights on? Sandra, would you mind getting the light?
So, when Mr. Lucia.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you for trying, we appreciate it.
When Mr. Lucia sent the email saying, hey, send some cool stuff that you're doing to Colin, here's just a, a few examples of of what I heard back from teachers. Ms. Dodge, who's working in the digital art studio, is doing some really cool stuff with with her students using Photoshop and Art Rage software. So if you've seen that first picture on the left there, I know it's a little small, students have like little tablets that they use styluses or pens to to manipulate their photography and to really do some, some great work in that aspect. And then that second picture is just how she's using the the new TVs with the Apple TV that's paired to it to demonstrate Photoshop for her students, and then they go off and and do some of their own work through Photoshop. Ms. Cataldo, who teaches AP Bio, that picture there is actually a video, so you can't click on that on your paper. But what it was demonstrating, or is demonstrating, is it's it's well beyond me, because I never took AP Bio, but the use of technology, which she used a stop-motion app, which, you know, takes a frame every second or two, so you can show a long period of time in a minute or two, and in that jar, there was a chemical or biological reaction happening, so something sciency happening, that happened pretty slowly over the course of an entire lesson. But through the stop motion, you can see it all happen within a minute, which is really cool for, just kind of show the culmination of of a long lesson. Ms. Lyon in her Intro to Business class, doing a lot of great stuff, online simulations of a lemonade stand and the Verizon App Challenge. That picture all the way to your right, where you see three kids really engaged, but all leaning over one iPad, where that's one of the things that we're trying to address with the one-to-one initiative. I think that's a good visual representation of where we want, where we want to move from. And then lastly, Ms. McGuire, for for some of her middle school students, she's using a screencasting app. So she has a green screen set up in her classroom, and for one of the, one of the student advisories, she kind of made a little news broadcast for the whole grade. So the students, along with some of their peers, set up the day's advisory lesson where they said, here's what our objective is, we're gonna be working on, you know, making expectations on how we want to treat each other throughout the year. And, you know, it looked like a professional news broadcast, and then that was, the link for that video was sent to all the teachers so that they could show that broadcast to the whole class. Yeah, so that was really cool, again, a video there, but we'll get to this PowerPoint, whether whether or not it works here tonight or not, we'll make sure that you get the the digital copy, so you can see everything. And then the the next three slides, it's one slide per school of just some of the other anecdotes that that we heard from teachers that were not on that survey, so those are even more examples of how teachers are using technology. Again, starting at Pearly with our pre-K students to really help them access content and express themselves using, using technology, especially our non-verbal or somewhat verbal students. I mentioned that in our PD plan at the beginning of the year, using that lamp software, where that's being used at Pearly. At Penbrook, there's a lot of great stuff going on to our specialist teachers, like our music teacher, using it to teach instruments to students. Teachers working on interactive projects where they're embedding video and using it for STEM independent studies and letting students really have that self-discovery and really do the learning on their own with the use of technology. And then at the middle high school, just a few examples there of how teachers are using technology, again, in a wide range of ways, but all very useful, very powerful for students. And we're hoping just to kind of keep, keep those good vibes going in making sure that everyone has the access necessary so that they can do their best work, especially as, you know, we hear more about the type of, you know, employment opportunities that are coming up more prevalently around the country. We know that our students need to be proficient and experienced in not just computing basics or or consuming knowledge through technology, but also using that technology to produce and to create and to manage. So the idea of using technology is not just a different way to do something that we've already, that we've, that we've always done, but to really leverage that, those new technologies to do things that we never had the opportunity to do in school because it just didn't exist at that point. And we know that it's changing very fast, but we feel when we, when we put the technology in our students' hands, they learn it way faster than we can, and they produce things that we probably wouldn't even think up. But we can't do that with our students unless they've got the access.
Can you?
Yep.
Speak to sort of the gamification, a lot of, like, kahoot.
Yeah.
Like, a lot of it is is turning learning, which is important, into a game, which isn't necessarily bad, but it's also not necessarily good.
So I'll speak to.
The teachers might have some.
Yeah, I wanna, I really want to save that for some of the.
For sure.
Teachers, but what I can say is, I know in, when we're talking about gamification a lot, especially at the primary levels, it's having students use their logic and reason. That's really kind of what, when we think of coding, or it really starts with, can you reason and can you use logic to solve some type of problem? And that problem could be in the form of a game by getting some character to move across the screen, or to jump over a brick, or whatever it is. And a lot of on the primary level, some of those early coding programs or apps or, you know, technology is really just getting students to solve a problem, solve a puzzle. And a lot of, and sometimes that doesn't even use technology, Ms. Mar was talking about just some building blocks that had basic, you know, coding terms on it that you would use to solve a problem, so.
And when you could bring fun in there through games, then you get engagement, and you get engagement, you get learning.
Yep, but there, there is a balance of, we're not just here to play games, this game, this game is, is really teaching you how to X, Y, Z. But a lot of the the gamification, I think, can can really be boiled down to, can you reason, can you use logic? Can you solve a problem creatively or divergently so that something is there that wasn't there when you, when you started?
Just adding to your question.
It does, I just hope we give a badge.
Marion and Liz, everybody gets a trophy. You work with the littlest ones in your, both your clubs and in your classes, do you, what do you, do you have like?
My code junior with day one is now twelve students, half girls.
Okay.
Oh, great.
So do you want to say something about, in response to Michael's question?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of the games, um, that I introduce, like, something like Slumdog, um, they play, right, in work, little workstations at, at, in the classroom, but mostly it's for home. And they'll ask me, can we play that, and I'm like, that's really for your math practice at home. Spelling City, Typing Club, you know, I only see them forty minutes a week, so I can't possibly teach the breadth of my, my curriculum. So a lot of those skills are really meant to be at home, and I, I'm now in the after-school program two days a week. So the kids play against me in the afternoon, they're like, I'm friends with Ms. Fravel online, you know, so. And then I, when I went on today, they gave me three gifts because they wanted to know how to add friends. And so those are the kind of things I would never do in my class, but then the word spreads, and they share, and they teach each other. So it, there is a benefit that they're learning other skills, even though it's not directly in my class.
Well, Liz, did you have anything on that? Because I know you work in the after-school program, too, right?
Yeah, as well, I think they use Scratch at the younger level, as far as coding is concerned. And the content behind some of the games that they do play is just geared towards what their current interest is. So a few years ago, a lot of the programming was behind Frozen, because that was all the rage, and Angry Birds, and now it's Minecraft. So it's delivered through a content that automatically is going to have their attention, that they are engaged in. But to echo Colin, it's all about the reasoning, the logic, and the problem solving that they are doing. They just see as they're having fun playing a game, but they're learning so much through that.
And we're, it's our code this week, we're three hundred million students worldwide are coding this week, and every student at Penbrook is doing that. And the difference, last year, we all took a course, either Course One or Course Two, when we did the same course. And this year, after I went to Mass Q and sat through some workshops, I'm just using a completely different approach to the way I teach something like that, where I'll introduce maybe ten coding apps, Codable, Tinker, I'll introduce all these different apps, and I'll make recommendations based on their skill level. But everyone in the class is sort of doing something else, and then we're working on independence, that you can't ask a question until you try three things on your own, you read the directions on the screen, you look for hints or prompts. You have to, you have to try before you ask for help. And I have to say, it's been working really well, and I don't know all ten programs, I might know seven of them, but they're all using whatever appeals to them, but still learning the same skills.
And I'll, I'll jump in also, in fifth and sixth grade, where there is a, an iPad for every student, and in the younger grades where there's five in every classroom, there are times when during literacy centers or math centers, the students have some independent time, teachers do not allow games on the iPad. Children are either going into their own individualized programs to either read or do math at their level, or or access, you know, MobiMax, which again are learning apps, but they're not, they're not playing games on the downtime. So we really, you know, again, when, when it is games, it's the, the coding and for a purpose. But when it's downtime, no one, no one's playing a game in that sense of, you know, let's go on and do, you know, back matter, so.
I, I teach fifth grade, and so as a center, I'll use something like MobiMax or quizzes as something similar to what you were referring to. And I think it is a way for me to assess my students' learning, because it gives me feedback on each student. And to them, their dashboard looks like they're earning points or whatever, but it's a quick assessment for me to gather, I'm able to track their growth through it. So it's kind of like a manipulation, if you will.
What they don't.
But they don't know one of them.
And it can adapt with each kid, so Jackie and I might be playing the same game on an iPad, but I might be getting multiplication facts that I struggle with, while she may be working on something else, and we don't really know. So it's also that intervention piece, and it's an inv- individualize.
And manipulation is okay to it.
Constructive, isn't it?
All in their best interests. So do you want anybody to come up with you at this point?
Yeah, so I'm gonna invite, so. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lucia, for grabbing that.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Grabbing that projector. So each teacher has made a couple slides, added a few slides to this presentation using Google Slides, so I'll invite them up, and and they can kind of take it from here. And really, the idea was for them to just give you an idea of how we're integrating technology from elementary into the high school so that we can really see where Georgetown is going as far as technology, so.
Come on up, guys.
Come on up, come on up, come on up.
Yep, come on up, close. Yeah, just pull some chairs up, just gather around.
We're going in order.
Oh.
The teacher will organize us. I really appreciate the two students coming out tonight, too, that's, it's a lot to come out tonight to do that, and I appreciate that.
Come as a, as a package.
So we should make sure everybody gets a chance to introduce themselves, because there may be some people who, who don't know. So Marion, why don't we start with you?
Oh, I've, I've been here a couple times.
Yep, but just introduce yourself.
Marion Fravel, Penbrook Computer Teacher.
Sandra?
Sandra Schwartzkopf, Social Studies, and I am doing the one-to-one program with my, one of my history classes this year.
Jenna Moore, I'm a junior. What are you gonna do, I'm a student, I'm a junior.
Liz Marketti, Business and Technology Teacher.
Meg Keown, third grade teacher.
And Jackie Connor, is the third grade teacher.
Perfect. Okay, who starts?
I think Marion. Well, I guess I, I guess I do. The, the big thing here that's different, I guess, would be the PD I did with the teachers on Google Classroom. And like this year, I introduced Google Drawing, so the students, you know, they sort of think they're playing a game, but they're learning a drawing tool. And then they can learn the difference between how it explained everything in Prezi, Drawings, Logster Works. The sixth grade now have, they have Logster accounts, and I hope to roll that out to the teachers in sixth grade, at, at least. And then they can use that for their projects as well. But it, it usually starts with the kids, you know, learning how to use these tools, and then we kind of send them out to the, send it out to the teachers. Slumdog contest starts tomorrow morning at eight, Jackie's all over, she's like, did it start today or tomorrow, because my class is winning?
So Marion, in terms of Google Classroom, would you say that at Penbrook, Google Classroom is being used by the majority of?
Fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Yes.
I, I know I use it for almost everything, so.
Now, can you just tell me a little bit about it, because I don't know anything about Google Classroom.
It's just a, a way that teachers can organize their assignments and their classes. So I would have five classes, and the kids, the students log in, and it's just an organization, and the students get the assignment, and you can communicate assignments and grade them, and return, it's paperless, so it's paperless. So they turn everything into me, and it, but everything's still stored on every student's drive, so their docs, sheets, everything. But then, but you can attach like a rubric, you can attach files to the assignment, all the resources you need to that one assignment, every student has it. And then they create the assignment, turn it into the teacher electronically.
They submit it, it goes right to you.
They submit it, or they can unsubmit it, resubmit it, and then the teacher, it can go back and forth for editing. In my case, they pretty much just submit it, so my students probably have had, I don't know, maybe four or five assignments already this year. It's December, drawing, slides, sheets, and docs. And what it teaches them is how to multitask with multiple tabs in Google Chrome. And that was a skill today when I sat through the, when I attended the MCAS webinar, and it showed, it taught us the different skills our students need to successfully take the MCAS on a computer. And I, our students have about three-quarters of those skills, if not all of them, already, because they know how to use multiple tabs. Because in the past, it's always been just Word or Excel, isolated, individual software. But now they're very used to, you know, doing research and having three, four, five, six tabs open and understand how they all work together.
And they can share with each other, right?
And then we share, yeah, and collaborate, so like this slideshow that Colin created, we all just added our slides to it, and the students collaborate either in small groups or the whole group. I, it was so funny, it used to be like if a class was creating a PowerPoint slideshow, um, you know, then each kid would create it, and then I'd have to combine them all, and, you know, it would be some amount of effort. But now, you know, you just create it, and. But now, you know, you just create it and then everybody adds their slide and they can look at each other's slides and then share it with whomever they want to share it with. And they know how to work very well in that environment. We've been using it for three, three years maybe.
The main thing is it's shared by everyone and you can also share a document. And you can um put your input, someone else can have input and.
A pure review.
I I'll show you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they have more examples.
I have that in examples on my side when I get them.
And I just have one more quick. And then it's Coding Week. It's been so great. And um, you know, I've taught um, last year I did Code.org. I've taught um CodeSpark and Scratch Junior. But this year, I'm like, I'm teaching them all even if I don't know them. And and it's been going so great. And the students who need extra help, I'm like, come over here, let's let's walk out a loop on the floor so we can understand. Now you walk nine steps and I'm gonna repeat the nine and use one step instead of nine. So the whole classroom is, everyone's working at their level and no one knows what level anyone's on. So it's adapting to their learning. And um I guide them. I'm like, oh, I think you should start with with that new Moana. There's one, the Moana, the new movie, the Disney movie. So a lot of the kids want to do that one. I'm like, oh, that's really good. And sometimes a first grader can do it and sometimes, you know, a third grader can do it. And but I know their skills and so I could kind of plug them into the one I recommend. They don't have to take my suggestion. But I kind of suggest, I don't know, Codable is for the younger students. And I just, you know, because they're picking by Minecraft. They all want to do like Minecraft. Um, but I'm trying to get them to recognize they need a base skill, kind of like your Just Write book. You know, in the same way you pick the right app so that they're learning and challenged, but not frustrated.
Right.
So that's we have that. So the discussion is not about how to use it.
So how long does that take, though? To find that, like to get that for, right, like so the children aren't frustrated, like what is the first step?
Oh, I know, because I I test them. I do that in about a minute and they just go off and do their own. And then some of, there's a few who want to just go ahead and do something else and then they'll come back and do what I suggested, so.
I apologize. And if you call someone more than twice, apparently it rings.
Sorry. I thought we had that off. Um, I don't know. It's been really, really great. And Mr. Glan is doing it with K and one and I'm there to assist.
So then, so do you then point them in one direction?
I strongly recommend this, but you can also do this and this.
Okay.
Of course, there's thirty choices here, but this is what I think is great for basic knowledge because we haven't done this in a year. So this is like a review. So those of you who feel like you need a review, go here. If you want a little challenge, you feel like you've been practicing in the at home. And some of Liz's students are like, I already know Scratch. I'm like, you could do whatever you want. You've been with Liz in her class. So everyone is sort of.
Is Scratch considered like the the epicenter of all of them?
No.
No, no, it's just more probably geared towards three and up, grades three and up.
Okay.
Opposed to Scratch Junior is pre-K through two.
So I do Scratch Junior with the little ones. And I have my little coders who I know their ability from after school with me who can go ahead to something else and I try to guide them. But again, it's their choice. Um, and so everybody's working, but the real thing is independence. That you don't just sit and I imitate them. I sit and raise my hand. I don't even look at the screen. And I'm like, I need help. I don't know what to do. I'm like that. No, we're not. We're gonna work independently. You're gonna look at the board and you're gonna read all of these places on the screen. And that's what and they need to think and know it's not gonna work the first time. And that's what I'm trying to really develop this year in the coding.
And one of our standards that Mary and I, Marian and I both teach to is a student being able to evaluate technology and deciding for themselves, based on criteria that we've set forth for them, which is best for them and what is gonna meet their needs at that moment. So that's one of the standards that we teach directly to, so it echoes that.
But they're very happy and like Joe Patel stopped me in the um parking lot. He's like, Christian just loves whatever you're doing in coding. And um it really, I have to say, was the best class all year for that particular class, for that fourth grade class. Um, because I think they bought into whatever they picked and they had to finish it. I'm like, you can't just keep changing. You pick one and stick with it because at home, you could do them all. You know, like don't, you don't have to feel pressured. It's only, we're only here forty minutes and you can go home and enjoy any of them. And if you have questions, just ask me. So it's really been a very interesting transition from last year where I was controlling everything, sort of, and teaching everything. And this year, I taught nothing in terms of the skills.
New ways to do it, yeah.
And so I'm trying to, you know, move my classes in that direction so that they can develop different skills.
Great.
Great.
That's me. Okay, so I'll, I passed out. These are the Google Classroom dashboards that you would see from my end and then what a student gets as a result of that, just to try to give you an idea. So when I have, I'm an assignment, I put it on Google Classroom, which I can show you in a moment. And then my students will go in and create their own assignment. That is then organized in a folder for me on my own Google Drive. And then when I go to grade them, I use two extensions that are called Hubrick and Doctor Plus. And they give me this on my screen. And so I can just use that rubric and I can click the online rubric um and give comments um and save it. And then if you flip it over, that's what the student will receive in a smaller version. So it's the rubric is then like exported and sort of ingested into their document with my comments. Um, and it just, it provides me a much, I can't explain how much it has saved sort of time and being able to give instant feedback to my students, which I think is really essential. Um, and then I can also go back and see the revisions that they've made based on my feedback. So I can check their history to see how they've grown in their writing, uh, for one thing. And then I also, can you, I, oh, wait. I I think, I was trying to figure out what the most invaluable tool that I've I've found in our classroom so far. And that's the Casper Focus, the JAMP um software where it actually allows me to control every iPad in my classroom. Uh, and I think as a teacher with a one-to-one classroom, that's like almost imperative in terms of keeping everybody on task and focused. So I just have a video because it's hard to explain without you. Just seeing it. I'm gonna make it bigger. Yeah.
There we go. What is that bottom shape? What are we describing? Polygons.
Over the last few years, iPad has changed learning with technology. Teachers are using iPad to develop new and engaging classroom experiences like Flip Classroom and Quick Assessment. And students are more engaged with apps like iBooks and iMovie developing deeper learning and understanding than ever before. However, with the internet and billions of apps available, students can often become distracted during class time. To help with this, we invented Casper Focus. Initially released in twenty thirteen, we've been continually adding new enhancements and features that enable teachers to manage the iPad in the classroom. At its core, Casper Focus uses single app or guided access. This allows a teacher to select an app and focus their students into it without having to touch each device. A student can't jump from one app to another unless the teacher releases them or the class period ends. Just as they would with applications, teachers can also focus students on websites. Instead of having to wait for students to type in the URL, with a few taps, the students are there and the teacher can continue on with the lesson. Moving from one lesson to another in a classroom can often be distracting. Using a built-in feature called Attention Screen, teachers can send a message like, hey, look up, to all their devices and bring attention back up front, shortening that transition time. Now, like, do teachers have the ability to focus devices? They can also customize what devices are focused on, choosing different applications for different groups of students. So a teacher can choose to have most of the class working iBooks, select a group of students to work in Keynote and exclude one student that's absent. Casper Focus also gives teachers other classroom management abilities. Teachers can reset pass codes, prompt students to display Apple TV, add iBooks in the iBook store.
I'm gonna stop it there, but that was sort of, um, I just wanted to show you because that would be really hard to explain to you. But I I haven't utilized it to its full extent yet. I think there's endless possibilities with that, but even just.
Do you ever send them messages?
I do. So if I have students, it's hard when you're up on the stage, if you will. And there are twenty-one kids who have technology in front of them and you can't quite see what they're doing. So sometimes if I feel like it's too loud, I'll I'll put on my Casper Focus, it's too loud. Like we'll wait for it to be quiet. So it even enforces classroom management in that way. But if I ask a student to go to a a particular website, it will take a good five minutes to get everybody. Someone will type it wrong, you know, there'll be some whatever. If I can just type myself on mine and push it out to all my classes, I mean, to all my students, it just makes the class run so much more smoothly. And that's something that I think is the most amazing thing that we've had so far. And I've just started to like dabble in offering um like an ebook and then having different versions of that ebook. So where you saw you could differentiate, I could see only more and more potential as I get more experience too.
Great. That's really neat. Oh, we went the wrong way.
Uh, so then if you click on the Google Classroom link, um, just so I can show you. Oh, that's gonna be Colin's, I guess. That's all right. Doesn't matter, we can go back, it's fine. I um, I just wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like. But I can upload any assignments or YouTube videos or whatever the um, the lesson of that day calls for. And I put it on my website, almost like, it would be like a, looks like a Facebook in the sense that there's sort of like a stream that comes down, but it's all my assignments versus um anything else. And then the students can, on their own, sometimes I let them use their earbuds and watch the video. And then we talk afterwards instead of just playing it on my um big screen. And just gives that different feel to what an activity or a lesson is going to look like to change it up and keep it going. Where sometimes during our win time or intervention time, I'll send kids off with an assignment on their iPad through Google Classroom and I'll work with a small group um at my table. So it's really allowed us to have everyone engaged in something. Like I know you, the games is not always ideal, but if you have twenty-one students and you only want to work with four of them, it's nice to know that they'll be engaged and motivated in whatever it is. Um, and then I'll get feedback from that app or that um website. And then projects, uh, students get to use sort of multimedia presentations if you flip to the next slide. I did my best. I don't, unfortunately, last year was our first year with the one-to-one iPad and I never thought to save some of the sample presentations that we had. But we have a Timeline of America Day at school and so we, and tried to incorporate the iPads for that last year as like a pilot idea. And so students, in addition to whatever they presented and then dressed in, they got to present some biography with their audio on it that their parents and students could watch. And they loved making them and loved having everyone watch them. And then I use Poll Everywhere, which is another example of sort of have, having everyone have a say in voting I'll use it for or to create word clouds for vocabulary exercises or to engage in a lesson. And it just has been so helpful that every student gets a say, but it's not always like raising their hand and speaking out. Sometimes it is easier to use technology. Uh, but it still is incorporating everyone in there, interacting with one another, even if, you know, it's through technology, so.
I see so many positives, but my brain is telling me the negatives. But my brain is telling me, okay, it it's almost teaching the kids not to interact with each other. I'm just seeing those downfalls in it and I'm I'm, you know, I'm not saying I'm against that.
No, and that's, and I think if I, I'm presenting just on technology so that could assume that my whole day is spent with technology. But I would say I probably use it about thirty to forty percent of my day. And that's most of the time they're typing or doing their assignments on it. It's not as if they're next to each other gaming instead of interacting. There's lots of group work that takes place and lots of drafting and brainstorming in groups before they go off to do their project. So I think that they're not just like behind a screen all day long. That that rarely happens. I probably use it.
Right, but like with with this, I was in particular, like um, just it it's so important for kids at such an early age to be able to self-advocate, you know. And I I'm just feeling that that's almost like suppressing that a little bit. You know, I know how kids don't, you know, some kids don't want that attention on them and I I totally get that. Um, but I just wonder if that is helping them along with not being outspoken or or, you know.
Yeah, I do, I agree. I definitely hear what you're saying, that it's not actually giving them the the push that they need to be more.
Yeah.
I think that we've just balanced. It's a balance of everything, but I do offer that. I don't want them to just have a crutch that's technology, but I would like to also get to hear their voices at times too. So I think it's just finding the balance, for sure. And then I just, I also, if you click to the next slide, a second. Um, and then for parents, this is actually my parent information night where I used Kahoot as a reference or review at the end of my parent information um spiel. And they actually, the parent, the parents absolutely loved it and they were very engaged. And it looked much like, much like my classroom when their kids are in there, sort of competing on Kahoot. Um, but I, what I love about Google Classroom as well is that it allows parents to sign up for updates and notifications. So whenever I input a grade, um, a parent would be able to see it and view it uh right away. And I could also use that as a communication tool, although I haven't yet because I haven't gotten as many parents to sign up as um, as I would have liked. But it's also a thing that we're just not, there's not enough knowledge at the moment, I think. And then I have a web, a class website, which has also been amazing in in terms of contact, scheduling, um, allowing students the opportunity to download resources from the classroom if they forgot their homework. I can now upload it there and they can just download it if they forgot it and then pass it in.
No more dog eating my homework.
Right, I I've I've eliminated that almost, but I still, I get that.
Now it's a modern.
I also have my reading log on my website and a um, I just, I've, I've found a way to use this technology to make my life easier and to help parents have all the resources and students have all the resources that they can. And that has been amazing for me. I'm very, I'm very grateful.
Yeah, so parents must love the communication aspect of it.
They absolutely do, I think. And they love that the homework is posted on there and if the student forgets, oh, we'll just print it off and you can, whatever.
Right.
So it it has, it's made it a much.
It's not a no homework day, it's still.
Right, exactly.
And so where where it says class blog and picture gallery, do you, are you the blogger?
Well, I usually start off with our blog until about this time of year, November. I want to see who they are as writers first and then give them something to write about too. We haven't really done much, but now by October, November, we've had lots of events and things have happened. And so I'll usually assign students or volunteer, have students volunteer to be the blogger. And so I I definitely have had, last year I didn't have a great turnout, but the year before I had so many kids fighting for the chance to be a blogger, so.
That's me. Okay, so that's me. And this is kind of lower elementary, um, so it looks a little different. We have five iPads that we're using in stations, um, so in reading and math um for interventions. But we're mostly using our Smartboard. And so for elementary, it's using that Smartboard for modeling, for engagement. Um, and then our Elmo too, which basically is a projector. You can just put students' work under and then it goes on the Smartboard. So the big things I focused on is that the Smartboard allows us to model. So so long are the days when I'm standing up there talking and kids are looking all over the room. Um, so in math, it might be a meant-to-math warm-up where that apple is cloned. And so as students are making arrays on their whiteboards, I'm up there maybe making arrays with apples or a student's coming up dragging the apples into um two rows with four in each or one row with eight in each. Um, in reading, I'm doing a read aloud on Owl Moon and we're talking about jotting notes and writing down setting details. And the Smartboard mirrors what their notebook should look like. And then with my pen, I'm writing notes. Maybe in the beginning, I'm modeling how to take notes so students always know what they're supposed to be doing. Um, and then at the end, I'm looking for student, you know, volunteers to add their notes. Two days later, two weeks later, a month later, we could go back and our notes are still saved. So we can say, oh, remember when we found that great figurative language in Owl Moon? Um, so the Smartboard really allows me to kind of mirror my expectations. Um, in another writing lesson, we were modeling how we take a Post-it and really stretch it out. And so we wrote a model story. Um, that was my model. Then we wrote one as a class down below. And then that was on the board so they could go back to their desk and try their own. So really, in fifteen minutes, they've heard one, they've written one, and now they're finally doing one independently. Um, and then that very cool diagram of the ear, that is actually interactive. And so we're learning sound right now. Um, and this is something that's just embedded into Smartboard technology. But it's kind of an interactive video and it goes through like eight steps of how we hear and that wave is constantly moving through the ear. Um, and so students really can see it, uh, which is pretty cool. So it's changed the way in my lesson, I'm modeling um with students. And then I think the big piece, which a lot of lower elementary teachers are feeling, is the interactive piece. And so in our lessons, which is that basic like mini lesson format, I'm teaching you a skill. Before you have a student go off and try it independently, you always want to kind of gauge where they are. And so the Smartboard really allows you to do that um in an interactive, fun way. Students like it. They really want to be picked to drag or move or um pick something. So um we're learning about sound. So the first one was is high and low pitch. And so all of those animals make a sound. So that bear will roar and they're hearing it um in our classroom. It's actually quite scary. Um, and that elephant or kids clapping, good job. And they're dragging that animal or that sound into the right category. And then it flashes if they, if we got it correct. Um, below that, we were sorting a bunch of books and we were saying, is that book, is the purpose to persuade, inform or entertain? And so again, students are just coming up and they're dragging um the technology, the the books up into the right category. And then we can check or reset and try again. Um, they love, that blue screen is Jeopardy. Um, and so that's just a review of Pilgrim's Puritans. And you know, you click on a ten-level question and then it'll go to that slide and ask a question and the music will play and they have a couple minutes to jot down their answer. Um, The Vortex is their favorite. That's um verbs. Um, the vortex is their favorite. That's, um, verbs, I believe, and they're sorting past and present verbs. Um, and if you get it in the correct vortex, it'll eat it up. Um, if it's not, it'll shoot it back. I think the only downfall is that they usually like when it shoots it back better. And then the one above is.
As long as they know they're done.
Yeah, they know. They're just like, Miss G, I just wanted to see it shoot back at my face. And then the one above is one that we made as, um, a class. I, we did an assignment of identifying kind of the main problem in a book. And I noticed that students really had a hard time with this minor versus kind of major, small problem. And so the next day I just made a sort and I said, hey, let's talk about some of the problems in Amber Brown. And, you know, she got teased because of her hair versus her best friend is moving to Texas. Is that a small problem or a major problem? And so those sentences, again, they're, um, uh, sorting into categories. And so I think the student engagement piece is what they love most about this Smartboard. Theoretically, they could be doing these one-on-one on an iPad. I could have my Smartboard be mirrored on an iPad. Um, but I think at elementary, you don't really need that. They're so excited to have that moment in front of the class to sort. Um, we do a lot of things, so there's no pressure and it's just in, in our daily routine. This is kind of what we do now. And I think kids expect it. When you just talk and stand there, it's, you don't get the same results.
Um, so Meg, Jackie said that she uses the technology like thirty to forty percent. What do you think you utilize it?
I'm using the Smartboard every day, um, every day. I'm, I use it every day. Yeah.
Are you using Google Classroom or any other technology?
I, in, they are in computers. And so I can see what Mary Ann's doing. There's just not enough access to an iPad or, we just don't really have the use. Um, and in third grade, it's that double-edged sword of their typing is so slow. So we try, you know, okay, you just wrote a three paragraph essay, let's try to type one, but it just is time-consuming. So I think we're using, I use Google Drive as a teacher and it just has saved the way I collaborate with my colleagues. So I'm kind of the slide maker of third grade and then I send them out. And other teachers can use them, change them, do what they want. Um, students are familiar with it and they use it and, um, they can save things. It just really isn't part of our day-to-day.
But like letter, if you're do, like third grade's doing letter writing.
Letter writing, yeah. We write letters every Friday.
And I found that they write letters every Friday. I'm like, they can't type them.
Yeah, so it's.
So I will then take their curriculum and then work on that for a few weeks.
But why couldn't you do speak to to, you know, speak into it, then they could edit it?
We could in a, in computer class, but we don't have, we don't have the technology.
They don't have, in the classroom, they don't have five, they have five.
So we could, like, sometimes we'll check out the iPad card if we're doing math testing online.
Yeah, they could do that.
Or we could check out that card to do, to do our letter writing. I think it's just getting that out there to teachers and having them overcome that hurdle of, of using it. And it, I think it's the training piece too.
Yeah.
But I will say that across elementary, everyone's using their Elmo, if they have one, or an iPad to use as an Elmo, um, or a Smartboard, because it just changes the way you teach. This is kind of how I manage my classroom. And instead of, what do I do next? Where does this go? I'm confused. It's, look at the Smartboard first. So I'm kind of the third defense now instead of right up in the battlefield. So with every lesson, I have a slide that's up there. That is, these are your four steps. This is what you're doing, maybe this is what I'm doing. And so they know. Um, in our math slides, they know if they're working in a group by themselves. They know if it's a green volume I can be talking, a yellow volume I need to be whispering to my partner, a red volume I'm by myself. They know what do I do when I'm done? Where, where does this go? And it allows us to work in small groups or have kids play, not play, but be on an iPad to try something independently because there's that management component. Every day they see the same screen when they walk into our classroom. And it's the morning message and it's familiar. Um, in reading, they know if they're meeting with me today or if they're meeting with me tomorrow, it's a little thing. It's a timer up in the corner in reading. And our goal is to sit, we are up to forty minutes of reading, which in third grade is really amazing. We're only at eighteen, um, for sitting and writing. So we, we just, every day we add a minute to our timer. But it's pretty, it's kind of changed our daily life. It helps with routines, helps kids focus. Um, and like I said, on my team, we don't all teach the same, but we're giving a consistent message to kids. Um, so I do use my Smartboard for everything. It's, if it doesn't work, it's a pretty interesting day in third grade just cause they need it, I need it. Um, and then the last thing, yeah, you can flip, is just kind of the fun stuff. And there is so much you can do with it. Um, I use it for a website to communicate with parents. So instead of like a monthly newsletter, it's weekly. My homework's on that. A link to other, um, school-related stuff's on that. Um, our math curriculum has a website. And so you could essentially download presentations from everyday math. And then they would pop up on your Smartboard and you could follow through the lessons or watch tutorials. Um, all the pages are on there, so teachers aren't scanning them. You know, if a student's working on a page and struggling, you can put that up there. I use Classroom Dojo as kind of a behavioral support, which kind of fits in with PBIS that we've been talking a lot about Pembroke. Um, and so that's kind of positive behavioral enforcement for, you know, on the student level and on the class level. We're working towards individual goals and class goals. And then my monster is our, our brain breaks. And so, you know, if we've been sitting for forty minutes in reading, we might stand up and do a quick exercise or a dance. Or before a big test, we might do a breathing exercise to get us calm and focused and ready. Um, and so all of this, we're just allowed to do now because it's part of our classroom and it's easy. Um, so I think that's how I use it. And the big thing is that students love it. I think parents like it, cause I'm communicating. A kid can get a dojo point at eleven-thirty and a parent will get a text and say, oh, my goodness, someone says being a good listener. And it's, it's kind of fun. So it's really changed the way I teach. Um, and it's helped our team be more consistent and it's helped kind of the management piece of teaching.
That's great.
Yeah.
Good, Meg.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's me.
Okay, and then there's me. Uh, so one of the big things that I use in my classroom, um, is Schoology. Um, I was introduced to Schoology about five years ago, prior to Google Classroom actually being a thing. Um, Schoology is very similar to Google Classroom, um, where it allows me to interact, have one-on-one communication with my students. Uh, it also allows me to get all of the information out to them in the form of an assignment, a link, um, a webpage, whatever it is. And they can then turn in all of their classwork to me through Schoology. Um, so students don't pass in, and Michaela's one of my students, um, they don't pass in any hard copies of everything. Any, everything is submitted into the assignment folder, where then I can go in and view one by one. I can annotate back to them and give them feedback. Uh, another thing that Schoology is an amazing resource for is it allows real-time communication between my students. So I just recently had a student, um, who was gone, um, on a trip for a week. Um, and, you know, they missed a lot of work as a result of being absent from school for an entire week. We were able to communicate, um, when they needed me in live time, even though he was in a different country at the time. He could message me through Schoology and it actually pops up on my phone. Um, and I can, I'll, I automatically get the alert and I can respond right back to him. Um, so that is a wonderful thing. So if a student's stuck at night over the weekend and they need help, they can message me through Schoology and I can respond right back to them. Um, so that's a nice thing. Um.
That is a nice thing, but how many teachers would, will wanna do that?
Well, you know, you turn it off when you need to. You know, you do.
I think it's fabulous that you do that. But I, I know that we can't expect teachers to do that.
Nope. Uh, but for example, I was at a conference, um, in, at Mass Q a couple of months ago. Um, so I had my alerts on. My students all knew what they needed to accomplish while I was gone. And they also knew that if they needed something, they can't use you weren't here as an excuse. Because they could message me and I got right back to them.
She did, I saw her.
Yeah, we were together. So that's a nice thing. Um, at night, if I have to turn it off, I just turn my push notifications off if I'm away and at home. Um, but otherwise, if I can answer, they know that they can message me. And as long as I can, I will message them right back. Um, I know you can do the same thing in email, but that actually requires me to log in and actually see my emails. This is just a notification. Uh, but Schoology has just completely changed how I've run my classroom. Um, if you're absent, you no longer have to say, what did I miss? You just need to go to the Schoology calendar and you see what you missed. Um, so it allows for the student to stay up to date whether they're in class or out of class.
Oh, to the Schoology calendar?
Yeah, there's a calendar. So on the right picture, you see where it says upcoming. Um, if they were to click on that, they're able to see what past and present. So if I've posted something that's due next Tuesday, they can see that coming up on their calendar.
Yeah, we've had trouble with Schoology deadlines, knowing exactly what time, what day.
Isn't it eleven fifty-nine on Friday?
It is eleven, you got it. So it's at eleven fifty-nine. And for whatever reason, Schoology defaults, there's time zone to Africa. I don't know why. Um, so if the student doesn't default to New York, New York time zone, then everything is late. But we usually clear that up within a day or two. The, uh, the other thing that Schoology is absolutely amazing for, and I'm sure the teachers that use Google Classroom can echo this on this, uh, classroom side, is that it allows me to differentiate my instruction without students knowing that they're receiving a different test or a different quiz or a different assignment or a different set of guiding questions to get them to the same spot. Um, it also allows me to individually assign, um, some of my students. They require, um, shortlists of things that they need to accomplish during the class. Um, and so I can individually assign those students different, like, we call them note cards. Um, and nobody knows that they're receiving a different note card from somebody else, but they have a different to-do list during class. Um, and they have the ability of checking off, right, what they've accomplished and what they don't. And that's a wonderful, wonderful piece that this allows us to.
I don't know if this question for Liz or Colin or whoever, how do you, from a sort of a macro level? You're using Schoology, other people are using Google Classroom, some are using Weebly websites, which, so we have fifteen different platforms. And I go grade to grade or teacher to teacher and I'm using a different system. How are parents supposed to know that I'm supposed to communicate through Schoology, but I can't through Weebly? Like, it, it's, it's a very, it, it's figuring it out, don't get me wrong. But it's a very inconsistent set of platforms that, I'm not saying that, that Colin should be the one to decide everything, but is there any mechanism to sort of coordinate any of that process?
Well, one of the, one of my standards that I teach to in Olive.
Gee, did, did you say that or did I say that?
Well, he was over there, Peter was over there going like this as you were talking.
We're gonna get to the bottom of that.
Yeah.
And we don't know what it's gonna be, but we're gonna have one platform.
Okay.
But, you know, one thing to say though is what they're learning in elementary school, which is Google Classroom, so that's a skill. They should be able to transfer that skill to Schoology easily.
Right.
So when they get to college, they might have one platform, which might be Blackboard, which we do not subscribe to and we certainly don't wanna pay for it because the other ones are free. Uh, these students will be able to then transfer their skills to Blackboard because they were able to use different things. So it's, I understand the concerns if you have one high school teacher using one thing and the other high school teacher using it differently. I do not think we have those issues. You can correct me. I'd say most teachers, if they're using a lesson management platform, are using Schoology in the high school.
And that's just because, like I said, Google Classroom's only about a year and a few months old. It hasn't been around as long as Schoology has. And, you know, to echo my standards that I teach to, it's, you never teach to the tool because tools change all the time. You teach to the content in which they're learning, which is like Mary Ann touched upon, working in different tabs. You know, you're, you're, you're teaching a skill, not a tool. So even though Google Drive, which is something that, you know, I use and, uh, many teachers use at this point, you're not, um, you're not teaching them Google Drive. You're, you're teaching them how to manipulate data. Exactly, how to access, how to collaborate. Um, but Google Drive is just the tool that we're currently using. And in five years, Google Drive might be something new.
They'd prefer to call it G Suite.
Oh, well, gee, I'm still struggling with G Suite.
If it's time to change, rename it.
I, I haven't caught on to the G Suite language yet, but I, I do need to, cause G Suite is G Suite now. Um, so that's why I put up the Google Know Your Terms, um, because it's about the skills that we're actually teaching them. Um, but Google Drive is just, it's a necessity. Um, it's, my students in my classroom, which is a computer lab, they don't use Word, they don't use Excel, they don't use PowerPoint anymore. Um, it is all G Suite. Um, reason for that is because they can access all of those things from their phone, from their iPad, from their laptop, from their homes. Um, and, uh, I forgot my homework, doesn't exist anymore. My internet went down. I might buy once in a while, uh, but for the most part, they have it in live time. Um, something that Jackie stated that is wonderful is that you can see the students', um, revisions. So if I hand back, uh, the first round of their, um, history research papers, um, and I say, you need to correct these seven things, and they say, oh yeah, I did it. I can actually go back to the revisions, see when they did it, how long they spent doing it, um, and how they actually revised and tweaked. So then the student can compare their first draft to their second draft. You're in research right now. Uh, so that is a one.
Well, not me personally.
Right. But that is a wonderful thing that they have. Um, G Suite also launched, um, Search and Explore, which is a new feature, um, very, it's maybe a month and a half old, Explore. Um, and the premise behind Explore is to keep the students within Google as much as possible. Um, because it is a classroom management thing. You're managing multiple tabs, right? Um, so Explore allows them to search online, get a picture online, do everything right from their Google Doc that they're working with. So they don't have to open up another tab to go to Google Images. They don't need to open up another tab to go to search. They can actually search on a sidebar, right on the lower right-hand corner of their screen, and pull in whatever they need to pull in. Um, so the Search and Explore feature that they just recently added with the G Suite launch is an invaluable tool. They talked about some add-ons that they use right within Google, which are Google's apps that you can pull in um, and use for citations and, you know.
And you can pull that right in and do a hyperlink, which I showed them the old way from a year ago. And I'm like, get a load of this now. This week you can do it this way. And they're all like jumping out of their seats because they've incorporated a lot of that right in.
I mean, this student exemplar that I have here, that was a check yes, uh, was developed by, um, one of our seniors. Um, and she did that right within Google, um, with a couple of different add-ons that she was able to pull in different shapes, uh, different graphs, different, she was able to edit her picture, um, which wasn't a high-quality photo. She was able to manipulate the picture, just all within Google. So what the students can do, um, you know, is remarkable from a Google standpoint.
Um, speaking of students, I feel awfully guilty that you guys are still here at ten minutes to nine.
Don't worry about it.
You guys all right?
Yeah, of course.
They're coming up next with some.
Is Dad okay back there?
Yeah.
It's getting late, I know that. I owe you guys.
So, just a couple other things that we do. Um, as far as creativity is concerned, um, there was a ton of apps that we added in, um, this year to that curriculum. A couple of them, um, were different logo makers that the students were able to design their logos for their projects. Um, Canva is an invaluable design tool that is free, easy to use. They use it all the time. And the things that they're able to produce through Canva, um, is remarkable. Um, iMovie, um, the.
We do our, we format our school's, uh, newspaper through Canva.
Yep.
It's very exciting-looking, more than just words on paper.
A Word doc, right.
Yeah.
Um, the entrepreneurship and management kids right now are developing, um, a commercial for the school store and they're using iMovie to do that. Um, Touchcast is another movie-making app as well as Telegami. Uh, in research, we're using different mind-mapping software. Um, we're also using Evernote, which is how they're actually taking their notes for their research. So instead of using a note card, they're actually creating a digital note, um, where they're categorizing, um, and grouping together the low, the notes with the same themes. Um, they're also able to add and insert web links, audio, highlighting, um, it's endless what we're doing in research with that. Programming, Mary Ann touched upon some of it, but, um, we're utilizing Scratch, Khan Academy, code.org, um, in our Raspberry Pis. The kids are about two weeks from getting into Raspberry Pi. So, yes, there, there's a lot.
There is most of these.
There are so many extensions and add-ons.
So much. So much, so much, and I mean, to speak to the getting them off the screen. Um, today I was watching my entrepreneurship class, um, do, working on the commercial, they have some teams right now, so some of them are working on website development for the online store, some of them are working on the commercial, there's others that are photographers, and I was sitting back and watching them, even though they didn't realize that at the moment, um, and I was watching them interact with one another and getting excited and engaged and giving each other real feedback. Um, and I chimed in to say, hey, this, this cut that you just did is phenomenal, what can we do to change it? I didn't even have the sentence out of my mouth, and they're, they're at the brainstorm again, live amongst them. So even though we are incorporating the technology, they're talking and extremely live, lively.
And then there was one.
And, and, and a few.
Oh, yes, definitely, we come as a package. Um, so, just to say, I, Liz already touched on, uh, Google Drive and Schoology, both of which I use consistently, I've used Schoology even before we had iPads, I had Michaela last, actually two years. And sophomore and junior year, we use Schoology in our class, so it's something that I think it's easy for me to manage, it's also easy for them. Uh, but this year, I, um, have been using Schoology even more because I make all of the documents available to them electronically. So what happens is I will download any content that I have, or any assignments and worksheets that I have for them on Schoology, they will be able to then use that and pair it with other apps. And what's amazing about Schoology, it speaks to a lot of different apps, you don't have to take fifteen different steps. All you have to do is just move to this, move to that, so it's really a one-step process. Um, so I just wanted to briefly talk about a few different apps. We will be using more of them, we are using more of them right now, but I just wanted to touch on a few of them because I know you guys don't wanna be hearing this for a very, very long time. Uh, so three, really three main things that, uh, we've been doing this year with, uh, my twelve students, one-to-one group. Interactive note-taking and annotating, formative assessments, and creating content. And the creating content part is really where they get to be creative and do their own thing, which I'm excited about, and hopefully they will too. Um, oop, yeah, it's down, it's down, okay. So notability, we actually just learned about it, we had, well, Liz and I trained ourselves, and then we trained the whole school on notability, which is great, and, um, I think we both fell in love, it sounds really geeky, but it's you can do so much with it, it's, uh, Google Drive, I feel like Google Doc is boring for note-taking now, I really do. With this one, there's just so many features that you could do, so I gave one example, I provide my PowerPoint notes to my students.
Somebody really wants you.
So I provide, um, PowerPoint slides to them, because I don't want my students to spend a majority of class time taking notes and copying from PowerPoint. I feel like that is a waste of time, I want them to know, but I don't like to be lecturing for more than ten to fifteen minutes and then have them do something. So what I do is, uh, my notes are sort of skeletal, and I say a lot of things that I'd like them to then summarize. Uh, with notability, they can do that, they can highlight, annotate, they can type, we have keyboards that are attached to iPads. And I also bought a few styluses that they could just use and write as well, which I don't know if you guys tried, but um, and I'll go through these, and then if you guys have any questions for us and them, that would be great, or at any time. The formative assessments app, a couple that I chose is Poplet and, um, iBrainstorm, which Liz just mentioned. And I like those where I could show them a, a quick video, or I can have them do a brief or complex reading, and then have them either take notes on it as they listen, they could talk about it and do something interactive. iBrainstorm is a collaborative app where they could, uh, if you see that on the right, do you see these two smiley faces? You can connect to up to three other iPads and then drag and drop your sticky notes. To avoid, uh, I'm just doing my own thing and I won't talk to anybody, oftentimes I'll ask them, they have to come up with a summary, but it has to be exactly the same, so they will have to talk it through before they put it down, which will allow for that kind of conversation. But these are super quick, and, and I feel like any teacher can just use them spur of the moment, you don't even have to plan. Instead of just saying, take notes, you can have them do something like this. Um, the creativity part, I think, m- what I'd like to see with one-to-one is less doing things that are the same, but just using technology for it, which is taking notes, which we still will do. But I'd like them to be creative and create their own content. So I have an assignment that I've been doing with my, one of my classes, um, my US two class, where they look at the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds lifestyle and problems that were existing, and they would create posters, and you guys did an amazing job with posters last year. But this year I had them use a Paper by Fifty-three app, where they could do their own drawings instead of doing it on paper. And, um, I had one student, um, do the last one, she was dealing with eating issues, right, milk and meats and all of that stuff. And then Lenny, I think that was your group, right, the mental health, yeah. So, um, then they would just be creative, and it is fun to be drawing in a history class as well.
Did they actually draw those?
No, we did a slightly bit of cheating, which is a great thing about this app, you can upload a photo and then you can manipulate it.
Okay.
So they couldn't just upload a photo, they had to manipulate it to some extent, because I can't, you know, not everybody can draw a cow like that.
Yeah, I know, that's pretty
And that was cow that was drawn, you know, without anything, which is pretty cool.
Is, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt, I'm sorry, i- is there efforts on, um, plagiarism, copyright, IP protection discussion?
Yes, yes.
We do that in all of our classes.
Let me actually jump to the next one, which, so this one again, you can create something, save it as a JPEG, PDF, share it, and then it talks to another app, and that's the last one, um, that I wanna mention. So the last app, which I love, is Book Writer. So I gave students an assignment to look at, um, Native American history written from white settlers' perspective, which is our textbook. And they had to learn that content and translate that really from Native American perspective. So they had to learn the content, which was a lot of research on their own, but then they had to create a chapter book. So the top, the one on the left, the half of it is one book, and I think Jenna, the one on the right is yours. So, this written part is not copy and paste, as we do on summaries, and for any images that they used, it had to be copyright-free, and you can search that through Google, because I wanted them to be able to publish these, if we chose to, which we can do through, I think, i- iBooks, exactly. So, there is, sometimes if it's just quickly, I want you to find an image, it's not as big of a deal, because for education purposes, we can use this.
For sure.
But if it's anything that goes outside of our classroom, it's important to me that it's either their own original image, or something that they can use, manipulate, and even use for commercials.
And Explore has that built in now, where i- if you're on our Georgetown domain, it will filter automatically for you, which is a nice thing of Explore.
So those are the just few apps that I wanted to mention, but I didn't know if you guys would have any questions for them as well, because they could tell you firsthand experience about whatever you wanna know, or me.
I think, when I went to the classroom, one of the things I found was very interesting is listening to them talk about how, how this classroom's different than maybe other classrooms in terms of how they access information, how they, so maybe if you wanna speak at all about, about that, cause we're obviously trying to think about going and doing similar things to what you guys were doing in that one class, you know, across the board, you know, over time, so it would always help to hear a student's perspective on that.
Yeah, like definitely with, um, we have this app, it's called Notability, and it allows us to take notes, and it's, I think it's very cool. Cause you can access it, like, if you have your iPad with you, and it's just, it automatically saves, which is great, so you always have it, so it doesn't get deleted, which is good.
That's pretty important, yeah.
Yeah, like, you could definitely use that app for like, every single subject, I mean, like, um, we ke- kept, uh, going over how like math would be a little difficult, but obviously there would be other apps for like, using, uh, like solving problems and everything like that, but for science, English, everything like that, Notability would be a great app to use. Especially Book Writer for English, if you wanted to use that, I mean, I thought that app was really cool because you could write your own stuff and then like collaborate with other students, so like, we did it in groups, so it was easy to do it through like, with the airdrop and stuff like that. And with like, um, with the new, um, TVs, with the Apple TVs and everything, um, it's really easy to share it with the whole class, cause you can just airplay it, and it comes right up, it's really easy, so, um, it's been really helpful, like, with all the new technology, like, upgrades.
Airdrop has been t- savior, because we have especially something like this, it's probably fifty to seventy max, just this one file. And you can't email it, it's going to take forever, so we were just, what I had them do is they had to airdrop it to everybody else, because for, um, the prior project I showed you, every group did a different topic, and they had to share it with each other that way, which was really good. Um, but that's definitely a, one thing about Apple products, that makes it very easy to be able to share it that way.
So how did you two feel when you, um, found out that you were going to be part of this particular classroom?
Oh, I was pretty
Excited?
Yeah, I was pretty excited about it, um, I mean, I like, cause I, uh, obviously have an iPhone and like, um, I love like using it, I'm on it all the time, so like, I think, I mean, who wasn't on the iPhone? Uh, so, like, I found it easier actually, uh, to do my work and everything, so like, uh, with Miss Schwartz-Goff's classes, with Schoology and everything, if I, like, in some, like, if I'm out and I like even forget to do homework assignment, she like, sends me a reminder, I could be anywhere, and I'm like, oh, uh, whoops, uh, and then I'll just go on Schoology, and it takes me like two seconds to send it in, but if, it was supposed to be like a written assignment, and I forgot to do it, I would be like, well, I'm not home, you know, like, it would be way like tougher, but since I could collaborate with my phone, my iPad, I mean, Schoology, all the apps, I mean, it's much easier to collaborate and upgrade, um, upload everything, so.
And so did you utilize your, your, um, device in your other classes?
Um, yeah, actually, um, when I go home and do my homework, I actually always have my iPad out, like, even for other things, I mean, in the classroom, since it's not all one-to-one yet, it might be hard to like, use it like in the classroom if it's just me, and like, everyone else is like, doing pen and paper, and I can't really do much with it, but like, when I'm home, I actually use it for like most of my classes, I type a lot, a lot on it, especially with keyboards and everything, I fe- I feel like that's an essential part, uh, if we're gonna do the one-to-one. If we were taking notes in a classroom, like, I sometimes do it, I'll be like, well, we're only doing it for like, two minutes, I'm not gonna get out my keyboard for this, like, it's fine. And then I'll like try and type it, and I'm like going like so slow with the typos, and I'm like trying to erase everything, and then I accidentally hit something, it's like a mess. Yeah, keyboards are like a major thing for it, I mean, it's much faster, a lot of students type much faster than they write.
So the kids told me they type, we type faster.
It's on to the side of the iPad, and I find it much faster, yeah.
And it's great, like typing, taking notes, because when you're taking notes and you're writing it, like, and you're trying to get, like, for me personally, I'm trying to get all the information down, and I'm like worrying about it, and about like getting it all down, and then I'm like not paying attention as much, and like then my hand starts to cramp, cause I'm like writing too much, so, like typing, I'm able to like get the information down fast, and like, while I'm doing that, I'm still listening to what the teacher is saying, and I'm understanding more of the content.
Right, you're not losing that content that you would've if you were writing it down.
Exactly.
Yeah, because you're like thinking in your head what you're writing down while she's still talking.
Yeah, Miss Schwartz-Goff puts, um, like, the actual like PowerPoint notes on one side, and then we can put our own notes on the other side. And like every other class, even though they make the PowerPoints like accessible to me, like, they'll say, like, they'll upload it online, I'm kind of like paranoid about it. So I'll like actually write it all down myself, and then I'll add to it, so like, even though I, I'm like, okay, I'm gonna not do that this time, I still end up doing it. So like, when she puts it on like one side, and then I have my like, like freedom to do whatever I want on the other side, and like, really like, cause we could draw stuff that helps us like illustrate what she's talking about, or we can write what she's saying, I mean, it's really helpful to have it side by side, especially.
That's great.
I find that's really useful too, because, um, a lot of times when you're in class and they're just doing like a presentation and like speaking, a lot of times I'm writing things, and like halfway through writing, I'm just like, I don't even know what I'm writing about, like, I don't know.
I write what's on the board, and I'm like, I'm not understanding this, so I have to go home, teach it to myself, you know, redo the whole PowerPoint in my head, but it's really easy with the nap apps and stuff.
Yeah, definitely.
So you rec- you recommend keyboards in the one-to-one, are there any other recommendations that you have?
I'd say keyboards are a must, I don't think our experience would have been nearly as good, and it's still early, it's only November.
Right.
Um, but I honestly think it, it would be, you lose half of that screen if you're just typing. So that's a must, I don't really know if I have any other recommendations to devices, I think certainly something that has enough space, because a lot of apps keep getting updated, and we get new ones, um, your thoughts?
I mean, yeah, the styluses, um, if we, if we were doing, um, like Book Writer or, um, Paper by Fifty-three, like, that was really helpful with that app, I mean, if we're doing something creative, I'm sp- I mean, with the notes, I don't al- always like, think of it, cause like if I'm typing and stuff, I won't be like, oh, let me get out my stylus and draw a little picture here, but like if we're doing like Paper by Fifty-three, like, and we were drawing our own pictures, I mean, that was really helpful if I was doing with my finger, it probably would've been like pretty messy, so, with the styluses, that was pretty nice.
Squishy button stylus?
Yes, it was a little pen, yeah.
I mean, it depends what you want to do with that, right, you can add a cheaper one, which is what we have.
And it made, um, like the pictures like much neater, like, so it came out much better, and for notability, you're allowed to highlight your notes, so with the stylus, it's much easier to like, highlight and to make everything like very neat and organized, okay.
So there's twelve students in this class?
Yes, we chose, um, uh, well, I talked to Mr. Lucio about this, and we chose this class because it was twelve students.
Okay.
And the reason why is that we had to borrow a school's iPads for it. Um, if we were to take a bigger class, then there would be nothing left, and right now we have, I think, seventeen iPads left for everybody else to use, which is very difficult, because in my other classes, um, Jenna and Elena, Eleni are in, in my other class as well, they're in my elective. And I, when I want to get iPads, it's fortunate that I have few students who already have them, to be able to use it for everybody. So that's probably one of the biggest struggles, I think, for a lot of teachers, is there's just no technology.
Well, I, I found it really impressive how much technology is used at the high school, given so, just from that survey.
Well, I think giving the teachers the technology was very important, right, so they had a chance to use it. Getting the Apple TVs and the, and thanks to the generous donation of PTA and others who helped us, you know, it's like what we found at Pembroke. When we think about the technology that we didn't have, right, I mean, you remember Cheryl, you had probably the most computers in your room of anybody else, but none of them matched. They were completely mismatched, they were, and thankfully we had donations, but when I look at it now, and you, you see how excited the teachers are, you know, having access to the machines, to the devices, and the permission to try different apps, and people like Mary Ann, and, and I think that's important that, you know, these three ladies are the ones that are left here, because these are three people who have really taken on the job of integration specialists in our district without having that title, you know, like when we needed, you know, people to step in and help other teachers run Tech Tuesdays, and Barry Blanders also in that camp. Um, there are other teachers as well, but these, these are the ones we sort of have relied on. And so a lot of the reason why teachers are feeling confident with it is because there are people like this who are willing to work with them, who will, like I sat and watched you teach the teachers notability, and people were really engaged in it, and just like a classroom, there were teachers who were getting it, there were teachers who were a little struggling, but they did a great job, and, and since then, I've heard more and more teachers talking about trying it and using it. It won't happen unless we do, we continue to do what we're doing now, and, and
And you know, that's a stuff is that you, we have Pembroke students who have one-to-one, even though they don't take it home, they show up every day and they can utilize it a hundred percent of the time if they want to, and then they go to high school and there's nothing.
Yeah.
And when in high school, we can get to higher level skills, that they will be, be able to use them right when they get to college. And it is a shame, hey, I have that kind of
So what do you, um, say to those teachers that are intimidated by the technology? Because they're, they are, I mean, and I feel for them, because I'm intimidated by technology, and I, I thought I was pretty good with it.
Just a try, just a, just a try, I had a group of second-year teachers observing me yesterday as part of their mentor rounds, um, and our network was down, servers were down, nothing was working. Um, so it was unfortunate, yeah, uh, no, but you know what, it was, it was a good thing for them to see, because I had a backup plan, I was able to go right to my backup plan, the students were on task the whole time, my classroom objective was accomplished, in a little different way.
Post-it notes though, the kids actually had to
You know, but it was a good thing, I think, for the teachers to see, that if, okay, if, you know, the technology failed for Liz, and she handled it, I, I can handle it too, um, and what I always tell teachers is just try. It is okay if it comes crashing down, um, and the app doesn't do what you want it to do, or the students don't respond in the way that you want them to respond, or would like to see them respond, it's okay, you have to try new things. Um, so try it with a small group, you figure out the kinks, you try it again, and you try it again. And a couple months from now, using a, you know, tool over and over, it, you're an expert at it. Um, so I always just tell the teachers to just try, call me if you need me, I'll be there to help you, we'll work out the kinks, and we'll figure it out. And the students that are in front of you, quite frankly, are some of the, the best bit of advice that you can get. Um, if you can't figure out something, I, how many times do you hear me say in my classroom, like, guys, how, how, can we figure this out? There's always a student that can jump up and say, yeah, just do this, or just do that, and then we're right back, and that's a skill too, because they're teaching. they're teaching, they're modeling, they're figuring out a problem and how to fix it. So.
And I wanted to add that with, so with this group the other day, um, when I invited them to come again to this meeting. And one of the students brought up, um, you know, I know what we're doing here, but there are some teachers who might be intimidated and that was the exact point. Are they going to be using it as much? And I, I kind of wanted to stress that there are some people who are intimidated and they might not be as willing to jump in. I will be honest, I don't care if I make mistakes because that's when I learn best. And when I make, if we, if something is not working in our classroom, I feel confident enough that they will be on my side and so far they have.
Yeah, they will be.
So, but um, I don't think, teachers might be intimidated, but they're very willing.
Yeah, yes, that's my son.
And I've had a lot of them approach me and be like, well, I don't really know where to start and just a quick conversation changed that. And they were able to think of something to do it. So I don't thi- I think that, that it will be embraced. It, it's not going to be hundred percent of the time, but even top schools, when we went to New York, um, we went to, they took us to a private school that had no funding issues whatsoever.
Right.
Like blink and you get what you want.
Private, private school you've ever seen.
Right.
And their technology person said that their teachers don't use it hundred percent of the time.
Yeah, that's right, they did.
So I think the expectations have to be realistic and I feel like all of us educators are going to meet those expectations, so.
So they have this skill now and they're using it in your class. How is that gonna transfer? Because if they're not going to use it next year, I mean, there's not gonna be a teacher teaching them it next year. So how are they gonna keep that skill or are they going to be able to use it? I mean, how is that gonna transfer outside of just what you're doing right now?
Well, I am hoping we have extra iPads. We're right, if I'm not teaching that class that's one-to-one, I can get iPads and continue working with my students. Um, at the same time, I don't know, do you guys feel like this is something that you could easily forget or?
I mean, since I use technology every day, like when we used to just do Google Drive, I mean, we've like tried apps and then if they don't work, then we switch from other ones, like, um, I already have used Google Docs on my phone on my laptop, like prior to this class and I'm pretty sure we all have, I mean, I don't know anyone that like doesn't have a smartphone or like doesn't always use their laptop for like schoolwork. So I mean, using these apps, I mean, we're new to the apps, but like we're not new to iPads and technology, so I feel like even though we might forget some of the little small details of like these apps, I feel like we'll be able to carry the skills out, uh, past this class.
I feel like we'll be, yeah, I feel like we would be able to figure it out because like, as like you said, like trying new things, like on apps.
And we're not, yeah, and we're not teaching anyway to an app or to a tool.
That's right, that's right. Not just to, you're, well, that's what I'm saying, if you're teaching the skill, so, but the skill still has to be.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's that the students are, are aware of what's out there, are in, unable to go to the app store and say, what do I need right now to accomplish this in a different way? Or to add to what I'm already doing and go out and shop for themselves to figure out what app could do that. And download the app and play around with it and evaluate whether or not it's something that's worth continuing with or trying to find something else.
Let's get those iPads.
We're working on it.
So that's the next key.
That's the next discussion is what specifically does a one-to-one look like in terms of the proposal?
Can I just mention, we have a new little studio we created at Pembroke, so the sixth graders have the opportunity to present morning meeting, every morning with me, I videotape them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's true.
It goes live to every single smartphone every morning and they make their announcements.
Oh, that's funny.
The morning announcements.
And, um, you know, the, you know, the first day they do it, Monday, they're all shaking and they don't know what to do, but by Friday, they're all little broken.
Girls, thank you. You did a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, great.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Um, so how do, how, who gets pepped? Like, so is it?
It's like, it's student council and, um, it rotates, but there's always two, everybody get an up.
Okay. Does everybody get an up at two o'clock?
That wants to.
In the sixth grade right now and everyone who wants or even ones who don't want to, I go in and I'm like, come on, you can do it. And, um, there, it's great, it's great seeing them develop from just Monday to Friday.
Yeah, it is, I've been there when I do it.
How much more confidence and then the personality comes out and they're, you know, live in front of the camera.
Yeah. Well, then when they go to the high schools, the middle school, how, morning announcements, they're just over the loudspeaker though, right?
Loudspeaker.
But how do you do it in middle school? Do like all the, all the kid, is it different kids every day or?
No, uh, Heidi does it.
Oh. Is it only high school that does the kids? That, that the class president or, okay.
Yes. The office.
The office, yeah.
The officers do it, okay.
That's great, that's really neat.
Thank you very, very much for all of your work getting us together.
Yes, it's very interesting.
You're all so very enthusiastic about it, uh, and I think it's great and I think the kids feel that.
Yes.
Cause I know my children that, that have had the pleasure of being taught by you, um, they feel that confidence too, which in turn makes them feel like, okay, we can do this. So I really appreciate it, I think it's great.
Thank you. Super. Thank you, ladies. So Colin, you're gonna come chat about the proposal and, thank you, Michaela.
Yeah.
Bye, Michaela, thanks.
Are you using the projector?
No.
Yeah, there you go. It's not right in your eyes, Mike.
Yes, it is.
The cover is written for you.
Cover.
Right, there you go.
There you go.
Peter, that was great that you did that because I think without that, it would've.
Yeah, it would, absolutely.
I think that, that's the thing, that's the kind of fault, right?
Pleasurable.
Plenty of projectors, then we get one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a new one.
Lesson learned.
Yeah, I already, I already emailed Mike Farrell.
Oh, thank you.
And told him that that doesn't work and that's.
Well, like Cheryl said, we should bring one every month.
Yeah, lesson learned, next time I will have one in tow.
This is not the only time we've ever had trouble with that.
But that was a very pleasurable presentation.
Good, I'm glad. I'm, uh, I, I was excited to get the response that I did, both on the survey from people who just wanted to contribute one idea and then also the, the flood of teachers that wanted to be here um, to express what they were doing with their students, um, which is great.
Well, when I read the, um, the survey, so I was really, uh, impressed with the amount of teachers, uh, at all grade levels.
Yeah, forty-five, forty-five teachers that.
That, and, and, some of them wrote so much in there, so I called a few of my friends and I said, because I'm not in Pembroke anymore, so I'm like, tell me what your kids think about technology. And it was amazing to hear because we don't really talk about that when I see them. And they just explained, it was the kids saying it. The kids were like, oh, we do this and we do that and, and it was really neat to hear. I was very impressed.
Yeah.
Every, every classroom uses technology every day.
Yeah, that's great.
It's kind of like if you build it, they will come, right? So we, we didn't have any technology, really nothing much happened. And then we started to add things and give people professional development, find some expert teachers who wanna help others and it, it takes off and it will only get better.
Now, I am gonna deflate the balloon a little.
Yep.
Because I am, uh, one of those people that I'm like, screen time. Michael and I had a little conversation about this, this week too and I'm like, you know, that is a little concerning.
Yep.
Um, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So what do we say to those people like me that say, you know, how, we're always saying, get away from the TV, get away from the computer, get off your phone. But here, now you're in school and he has an iPad.
I think the.
This is the twenty-first century.
But, but even there, there needs, I think that the understanding of, of a one-to-one program is not that this tablet, this machine is going to replace the experience that you would get in, in a school system. It is to enhance that experience using the, the twenty-first century learning expectations that we know that we need our students to have when they leave us.
So it's like, it's like what the girls were saying, how they use it for note-taking and, and collaborating with each other, cause it can be shared as opposed to.
Yeah, I do love that, I do love that. Right, all the collaboration. I mean, my boys talk about, you know, doing projects with other students and they edit each other's work and they get into the Google Docs and they do the Google Slides and it's, they're actually working together, you know.
I'd say it's more of an enhancement, you know, they're still getting the interaction, but it's sort of replacing the paper and pencil.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and I do see that it's building confidence too, because it takes a lot for you to write a pa- write something about, you know, you're given a question, you have to respond to it and then to put it out there knowing that your peers are gonna see it. To me, that, that, I was like, wow, that's intimidating, but to me, it's teaching them a great lesson that, you know, not everybody has the same way of thinking and, you know, put it out there.
But kids still, kids still write, kids still read, kids still do math computation, kids still have morning meeting, which is all interactive. You know, I mean, it, this is just a, another way into the content and another way of learning and producing and creating and, but it's by no means ninety percent of what happens during the course of a school day.
And the other.
And that's not the intention.
I think the, the other thing that the technology does, maybe as a, as a, you know, secondary result is it teaches a lot of those soft skills or life skills that we're always preaching to our students, like the idea of taking accountability for your work, like if I didn't turn something in, I know that I can, I have that reminder, or the idea of, you know, I can take a risk by kind of virtually raising my hand if I wouldn't be able to, or I can, you know, solve a problem in a way without having to hold someone's hand by just figuring it out using a new technology. So it's those, those soft skills, teaching that kind of student perseverance that, that we, we stress a lot in, in a way that's, that's familiar to students, so they're, they're willing to take that, take that leap or, or kind of walk up to the edge and, and, and take a risk and make a mistake and be okay with that.
In collaboration, you know, they, you need to recognize each other's strengths within the group, so I, I mean, I think they learn that this person is gonna really not easy to collaborate. be able to help us with this and another person's gonna be able to help us with something different. And together, using everyone's strengths, you can come up with a great project.
But that can only happen if.
Nice segue.
The segue.
But let me just say this, I wasn't being facetious when I said to Liz that not every teacher
No, absolutely.
will or should have to be at the end of that, um, at, at the end of this, to answer a, a student's question at ten o'clock at night.
Right. Right.
So that, you know, I am so mindful of all that we put on teachers. You know, let, let's forget all about this, but everything else that we put on teachers, this is just another thing.
Well, we, we aren't asking them to do that.
No, I know we're not. I, I certainly know we're not, but.
Yeah.
But there is a pressure if, if Liz is doing it and then, and then Sandra is doing it and it's like, well, I'm not.
Exactly. And then, and then it's the students that are the ones that, okay, well, this student has Liz that's gonna do it. And sh- this student has this one that's an excellent teacher, but just doesn't have that, you know, has a family, has, you know, I just.
Well, we don't.
I think that goes back to what, what Sandra was mentioning about making sure that the expectations are, are clear and, and the expectation is not fully integrate this into every lesson that you're teaching every day. I think the, much like we don't, you know, mandate how teachers plan a lesson or deliver their content, they have the autonomy to, to use their own strengths as a, as an educator, to do their best job in front of kids. The, the technology is another tool and a really useful one that they can kind of have in their arsenal, in their, in their toolbox to, to pull from and we're gonna give them the training that they need to use that in the best way that they can for them, not to emulate Ms. Marquette or emulate Ms. Schwarzkopf, but to, to just be a, be their best teacher.
Mike, can I put you on the spot about this? You have a thought?
Yeah, listen, I, I value.
Come behind the, come behind, you're in an obstructive view.
Yeah, you're right behind the post.
Um.
You're an obstructor.
Yeah, what Barbie said I thought had, actually, I, I appreciate it, um, and, but, but I think Colin, your response was spot on, that, um, we, we would have to, you know, obviously, uh, set guidelines and expectations that are clear for everyone. Um, I mean, if anyone's up on current events, if you see around the world, for example, I believe France, uh, recently had issues with, with private businesses and emails and, uh, the limiting of emails during private or, or family time, whatever it may be. So what I'm saying is, Barbie, I respect and I appreciate that, you know, you respect teachers' time and how this can be kind of job creep or encroaching. However, I think the way that you're framing it, um, Colin, is, is the, the right mindset for it. So, but it's, you know, again, if we, if we put realistic expectations and, and limits on it, you know, within reason, um, I think it's something that's manageable and can help both teachers and students.
Do you feel pressure, Mike, to, to be using technology all the time or?
No, it's not, I don't think it's a pressure. I think it, it's like anything else. It's, it, it's, it's neither good nor bad. It's, it's how you use it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, listen, I, I think all professionals, uh, you know, kind of vary their craft and change things up. And particularly within education, it's our responsibility to deliver our content in a variety of ways.
Right.
So I think probably for me, um, it, probably the best thing is that technology easily meets a variety of accommodations for students.
Yeah.
So you, you can, you can, uh, deliver, uh, a lesson and almost seamlessly, seamlessly, you're hitting, you know, five or six points on an IEP in a way that is still reaching everyone. And it's not, it doesn't marginalize anyone and, you know, so that, that's, I think that's one of the benefits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and obviously, as Colin mentioned earlier, there tends to be a greater engagement, you know, this is, this is part of, of the world that we're in. But like you said, with, with everything, listen, as parents, we all have to be cognizant of screen time. You know, so it's, and as you said, Colin, it's, it's how you use it, you know, so.
So you, do you teach ninth grade, Mike?
Ninth and twelfth.
Okay, so next year, if we do this in seven, nine and ten, your students would have iPads, so as a teacher.
That's why he's going to eleven.
As a te- as a teacher, right? I mean, do you see your te- do you see your teaching changing?
Well, I think every year changes a little bit, you know, I'm always modifying things, I think most, most, uh, you know, kind of seasoned professionals are. So, um, listen, it, it, it can't be drastic overnight. I think as long as there's a reasonable goal, it's kind of set from month to month, uh, unit to unit. And it's like, okay, I'll, I'm gonna have a reasonable goal and say, within this unit, I will try to, you know, adapt or incorporate, you know, a few lessons that kind of incorporate technology or, or, you know, different devices, whatever it may be.
Yeah, or you, you use notability or one of those writing softwares or something.
Right, right. And the thing is, and then that's the thing, it doesn't always have to be, I think people rush to this idea that it has to be complicated. It can be done in very simple ways, uh, and you're still kind of, you're, you're reaching your goal and you're reaching the, the, the objective for students.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I think if, it can be easily, easy to overcomplicate, um, but I think through, through professional development, through collegiality, um, through kind of just research and professionalism, it's just something else that, you know, we can, you know, use to our advantage.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
We'll segue in, huh?
It goes back to the.
Yeah. Uh, so can we jump into the, to the proposal for the one-to-one program? So, um, you've had this in your packet, there, uh, are some slight amendments as far as the, since, so let me back up. Most of this, um, was, the first draft was made by Wes, uh, who's here in spirit, hey Wes, um, and he kind of started this draft talking about the infrastructure that was done in years past, some of the professional development that, um, the school had started, um, and really kind of the, the prep work in getting this, um, kind of the idea started. Um, from the device comparisons, because the iPads were kind of, the decision was made when, you know, at the beginning of, when I came at the beginning of this year, um. So I, I looked at this proposal and I kind of made the amendments and since that first draft, there've been a few, um, kind of changes to some of the hardware that we are requesting through this proposal based on the feedback that uh, you heard a little bit here today as far as what the students said was a necessity and when we did our site visit at Hamilton Wenham, who's headed, uh, a one-to-one program rolled out, we took some of their suggestions as well. Um, and, uh, we worked with our Apple rep to give a more, uh, more updated, um, kind of pricing models based, uh, on the, the finance, uh, the financing of the, of the iPad. So I wanted to give copies of that out, so we are all looking at the most updated and accurate information as far as the, the financing is concerned. Um, so you have the proposal. I, I really just wanna be here to answer questions that you may have, clarify anything that was unclear, um, and just serve as a, as a guide.
Can you, before we go into numbers.
Yes, yeah.
Can you, assume for a moment, we're going forward. Can you kind of lay out the next six, nine, twelve months, whatever the appropriate number is?
Yeah. Yep. So, uh, after tonight, uh, the, the most immediate, uh, thing is to make sure that families are aware that this is coming down, down the pipe for the next school year for those grades that we are proposing to roll it out to. Um, that comes in the form of lots of communication with parents and the big kickoff would be, um, a, a community meeting that we would hold at the middle high school um, with all of the VIPs that need to be there. The Apple rep has agreed to be at this parent meeting, administrators, I would be there as well as the representative from this fax, uh, company and really just have that be a forum where we can make a frequently asked questions list and knock those off to say, we know you're probably wondering about A, B, C, D. Um, so let, let us give you the, the info, so there's not any misinformation out there. Um, but then also come with your own questions so that we can. But then also come with your own questions so that we can make sure that all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. From there, we would have, uh, another, um, session towards the late spring, towards the end of the school year. To have families kind of come in and sign up for those, those payment plans if they're going on it, or just letting us know how they're going to get into, uh, this program. From there, collections would start towards the end of the school year. So, um, by the beginning of the school year, late August, early September, we're handing devices to students. Um, and then we're kind of off to the races and running. And hopefully with a new integration specialist that can be accounted into next year's budget. Have that integration specialist be the, the main point of contact for integrating and helping maybe some of those reluctant teachers or pulling teams together. I'm more than happy to do any type of summer professional development for any of the things that we know our teachers may be a little deficient in that we wanna teach them or do refresher courses. But as the school year gets off and running, really make use of the, of the technology. That's kind of the idea.
How about from the, so two hundred, I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head of, of people who, students who are buying these. Looking at the summer, who's setting up the MDM, who's opening the boxes, who's, who's putting the device management system?
Okay.
So that's what, that's what lets us.
Like we saw Jackie talking about the, the management system.
That's what lets the school push out apps, kind of control the devices.
Okay.
Who, without a Wes, who's, who's doing all that?
Uh, so we have.
You can say you, it's okay.
Uh, well, it will partially be me. I think it'll also partially be, um, some of our current staff. But we also have just posted in our collecting resumes and calling some people for that tech, uh, the tech technician, um, that were using a portion of old, you know, Wes to, to fill that gap. And we're specifically looking for, um, someone that has one-to-one experience in schools. Some, as we're looking through resumes, it's something that I, I am keeping an eye out for. Who ha, who maybe has some of that experience that, that we may not or can help guide us in that direction.
It would be the technicians, right? So we've got Barry, we've got Paul, we've got the new person that, to, to be hired. And then if we need to, we can pull Jared in, right? So, so there should be four people, you know, that would be available, like, like I can tell you right off the, right off the bat.
Yeah.
Um, it would be, that would be a summer project.
Right, and I, I guess I'm, I'm mindful that, no disrespect, but none of the four have ever done it before.
I think. I mean, I did it with thirty kids at my old school, but that's not, that's not the same. I understand that.
I, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking, so how many are we looking at? Seven, nine, and eleven, seven, nine, and ten?
Seven, nine, and ten, Peter. What did we figure for total numbers? So like three fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the most.
So in other schools, when they've gone to this one-to-one, I'm sure the first year was probably less, um, I'm sure they had some people that opted out.
Yes.
And I'm sure that that number went down as the years went on, because I'm sure they realized, okay. So what are we looking at? What are we figuring?
We figured six percent. We fig, we figured six percent.
Six percent will opt out.
A, Apple tells us that number.
Based on their history.
The ones that do opt out and they do use an iPad that they can borrow from the school.
Right, so we have some iPads that we currently.
But so the work that is to be done later on that night, can they log on to their own computer and will that work?
Oh, they don't take those home? No.
No, the loners, the loners, because they are leased by the school, or they stay at the school.
I mean, I think.
So can they still access all their work?
Sign it out.
It depends, yes, uh, if they're, so if they're doing their work, say, through Google Drive or through Google Docs, that can be accessed on any computer.
Right.
So, yes.
So wouldn't you, wouldn't you make that easier for the students that opt out to at least have that, so they can continue their work?
Yeah, I would, I would hope teachers would make that accommodation for those students. However, for any student that does opt out and they're, and the other students are using a native app to that iPad that we purchased, that they may be saving work within that app, that student may not have access to that app if they were to go home and not have that technology. Which is a reason why we're really, we really wanna get everyone as possible on board so that we're not leaving anyone out. But we, but there, there will be those accommodations that will need to be made.
Well, and it sounds like there's limited iPads available at that school.
Well, well, part of our plan is in the techn, we, we are planning, to the budget we're gonna propose to you, to level fund technology. In fact, we're proposing to actually increase technology slightly, but level funding would be the, so there was money in the budget last year that Wes used for something he already took care of. So our plan would be to leave that money there and then that money would just be used to buy iPads. So there's sort of two levels. There's the people who are, can't afford them financially, right? So there's that, that group. And then there's the people who just opt out, right? So our plan would be to make devices accessible to, to all of those people. But we would need to make sure we use the ones we already have and then ones that we would purchase. So the goal would be to have enough iPads on hand so that no one is without the opportunity to use one, in, in the classroom anyway, for instructional purposes. In those grades.
Would the, the, the free and reduced lunch folks, would they be using the Air Two, like the, the surplus?
The new ones we buy. They'd be using the new one.
Would they be getting pro, would they, they would be getting the same?
The ones we buy are gonna be the same.
Put them at a disadvantage because of other circumstances.
It's not, yeah, circumstances beyond their control.
So if a parent chooses to purchase it on their own, then we, then that parent will then give it to the school to load on all those apps?
They, Wes has told me that they can. It's gonna be a decision that maybe we'll have to work with the new technician on whether we want to go that route or not, whether that's just gonna muddy the waters even more. But as far as I know, that opportunity.
Exists.
Exists.
So otherwise, they would be responsible to put on the apps for a fee?
Question is that if you want to pay for the apps yourself, then, um, you give us the machine. I mean, uh, if you don't want to pay for the apps, you give us the machine and we put it on for you.
Right.
If you don't want us to touch a machine, then you're on your own for the apps.
And how much like does an app?
Thirty-seven thou, we thought thirty-seven dollars a, a year would be maximum.
No, but for how many apps? Oh, for total?
Most of the apps are free.
Yeah.
Most of the apps are free.
Most of them are free.
So what's the advantage of purchasing through the school or getting your own?
Sure, so, uh, a few advantages. Because we're purchasing as an edu, as an educational institution and in bulk, we get the machines at a lower cost than you can buy retail. On top of that, because we're in education, the warranty that comes with these machines are for three years. And you can only buy for an additional cost, only two years of warranty through Apple, just through regular retail. We're also loading on that Jasper suite that, um, Ms. Connors talked about to manage and control the iPads in the classroom. And you get the benefit of just having all of the apps pushed out to you. As well as, uh, a, a really awesome, durable, rugged case that has a built-in keyboard, like you heard the girl say, is, is essential. So all of that coming at a much lower cost through Georgetown, plus the option of paying overtime rather than purchasing through an Apple store or using their financing system.
Is, on the free app thing, what, we had a discussion here a couple of years ago with a former school committee member about advertising. And, and free apps have ads all over them, 'cause that's the only way they're free. We're now telling students to use, and I don't know if Notability does, but I'm gonna beat up on them for the moment. Use Notability, this is the app that we're using in this class, click on this link and you can download this game and. Or the, you know, the, I heard the frozen thing, like.
The commercialization, yeah.
I, I wanna make sure that we're not.
Yeah, so.
Figure out how to minimize.
The good thing about the, the app purchasing from the school is through, so most, most free versions or light versions come with a, you know, a paid version. And if we find that there's a free version that is just every thirty seconds you're getting a pop-up ad or you get a banner along the bottom, we can flip over and say, well, we can purchase this. And the benefit of purchasing it as a school is we're part of the volume purchase program, the VPP. And basically, we get all apps for half off. So if it's two bucks, we get it for a buck. If it's ninety-nine cents, we're getting it for, you know, fifty cents. So, um, that can be easily mitigated if we find an app that is a great app, but is, we don't like the advertising that's associated with it. More often than not, it will have a version that you can get ad-free.
And I think we talked about, um, in, somewhere in the budget, identifying about thirty-five hundred dollars for apps.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to have it there if we, if we needed to do paid apps.
Yeah.
At a buck, at a buck a shot, you can.
I was just gonna say, didn't you just say thirty-seven dollars?
I said, I meant thirty-five hundred. Thirty-seven dollars for, that was, that was per, per computer.
Right, that's what we would.
We were talking about.
But that's ten bucks, so wait, you know, that's, that's ten against thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I get it.
Yeah, we, I mean, we feel like we need to have some money for apps, you know, on the budget.
So, uh, when will the first parent, uh, meeting be?
We haven't set, have we set those dates yet?
I thought it was January.
June, January fourth.
No, that's the, that's the, January fourth is gonna be the Alice. I believe it's the, I wanna say, it's the, it's the week of January sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen. I, I wanna say the, I wanna say the eighteenth, but don't, don't hold me.
The Thursday of that.
Okay, well, that'll help us.
That's the eighteenth.
We're getting closer, we're getting closer.
That's the eighteenth. That is the date you told me.
Yeah, that's the, that's what I'm thinking.
So I guess I'm just, uh.
So we would talk to the parents on.
And Suzanne and.
The fifteenth.
Pam, do you hear a lot of talk, like, at your, with your high school children's parents about the one-to-one? 'Cause I just feel like not many people know about it.
Nope, and to make sure that this will, is a very, very important meeting to attend on January eighteenth. Because it's, it's a big deal.
It is.
I'm sure we'll just.
We'll, we'll start, we'll start pushing it out now.
I have not heard a single parent mention this.
Right.
So I don't think they're that aware of it.
Mm-hmm, well, they, they're probably not aware of all the details, but Peter's mentioned it at every open house. You know, we've, we've definitely talked about it here at the school committee. I mean, again, I know people don't all watch the meeting.
You've wanted this for a couple of years, so I think that's why.
I came to the school committee meeting with, uh, mentioned this at the school committee, and I don't think anybody on this current board was serving it.
Right.
They hadn't even invented the iPad yet.
And I've been on for six years, so, right.
And last year, remember, the goal was, we wanted to do it last year.
Yes.
But we said we, we, we didn't feel we had enough time. We had a few things we had to work out. We wanted to go and look at it in other places. So that's why it's, we, we knew we'd be ready this year, but we definitely need to.
I just wonder how many sixth grade parents know?
Right.
Because those are the parents that we're talking about.
They probably, probably not many.
Unless they have older kid, unless they have children and, you know, the, right.
Well, I think that's why we wanted to do it, like, we wanted to meet with you in December.
Yeah.
And that's why we wanted to get right out in front of the parents after the holidays. So that we, and then we wanted to have another meeting after a little bit of time so people could digest it, ask their questions. We could provide information that people might have. Then the goal was that people would come in to whatever date was decided or whatever and, and be able to actually sign up. And so the first payments would be in June, would, depending on whatever they decided.
Well, I think the sixth grade parents really need to know because they're going from.
I agree.
Their child being handed one.
Yeah.
To, I know they're not bringing, they're not.
They're gonna take it home, yeah, no.
But they're handed one every day and now they've gotta buy one.
Yep.
So that's.
I think they might be excited about that opportunity though, because their kids are excited about technology. I think they, you know, I mean, yes, I mean, we, Joan sent us an email the other day, um, talking about some, something, somebody had brought up, uh, in some district, on the listserv. That's what it was. It was on the listserv. And, um, people had, uh, so it's had come up and because, um, the just, the decision of whether or not the district should lease the machines and then, you know, give them out to people. So there are machines, but we loan them to you versus people buy them on their own. And because I guess there's, some people had complained about it being, you know, a, an equity issue or a civil rights issue, you know, that not everybody's gonna be able to get one. And, you know, I think ideally, we would love to do that. But the, the reality is we, we don't have the financial capacity to lease three hundred iPads. We just don't. So the only way that we can figure this out is, is to do it this way. But we feel like at least the families get the, they get the iPad. You know what I mean? They're not, they're not, they're not paying for them and then they don't get to keep it.
We surveyed, we surveyed parents in the past.
We have, and they said they.
A willingness, a general willing, not every single person, but you know, a general willingness.
I think Peter asked it in his satisfaction surveys.
About the last four years and.
Yeah.
It's, the disclaimer I have to put there is you only get about thirty-five percent response rate on that. But it was in the nine, of, of the people that responded, ninety-five percent of the people said they're willing to pay for this.
Significant majority.
And it is a model that's being used in lots of other schools around, in the, in the area.
But I also think Barb, to, you know, to Barbie's point, that year one, you know, when we listen to people, they'll say, you know, a certain percent, a higher percentage the first year maybe didn't participate, but then they all, you know, mu, mu, many people the second year took advantage of it, right? And it just became part of the culture, right, of, that's just the way it worked, you know, it just became part of the culture. And when, and the more it was used, the more people could see the enthusiasm, you know. So that's our, that's our hope. We just feel like this, the time is right to do it. And, you know, we'd like the permission to, you know, to go out and talk to parents and see, you know, what, what they think, you know, and whether or not they feel that they can sign on to this.
Is, I, I guess I have a, I have a, I have a series of questions and thank you, a bunch of you answered a whole bunch of questions that I sent a few days ago.
You're welcome.
Um, related to the way that you just phrased that, are we going in January and saying, hey, we're thinking about doing a one-to-one, are you interested? Or are we saying, we're doing the one-to-one?
Yeah, because you, yeah.
Which I think, that, that came out to me as, what do you think?
Right, you just alluded that we were gonna ask them.
Let me rephrase that.
Okay.
I, I'm asking, we're asking you for permission to approve for us to go out and say, we're doing a one-to-one initiative and, you know, we want.
Motion before us.
That's right.
Yeah.
We're, 'cause it's a money issue. We feel like, you know, the school committee really does need to be the, the body that says that, yes, we're, we're prepared to support this. Our recommendation, obviously, we didn't bring it to you if we didn't feel that it was.
We don't think we should do this.
Yeah, we, yeah, and, and, you know, thank you to Michael and who participated in some of our meetings and came to Hamilton Wenham with us. And, you know, we've been trying to, it's not just a few of us, we, we brought in some of the teachers. And we've tried to have a, a study team to really take a look at it with all the different angles that we'd have to think about.
Is there a motion here?
But do you think you also have the parents buy-in?
I, I, the people I've talked to say absolutely, you know. But we won't know till we go out and we talk to people about it and we tell them exactly. It's just like Start School Later. People conceptually think it's a good idea till they see the, the detail, right? And then they'll determine whether or not they agree or they don't agree. You know, that people are, will have to decide whether it's going to be something they're willing to do. We're gonna make our case, if you approve it, we're gonna make our case, which is why the proposal has, you know, rationale and, you know, where did this come from? Because we didn't wanna just say, well, here's what it's gonna cost you, right? We, we, we're trying to, you know, put this in the perspective of, here's all the things we've been doing to work up to this point. Um, we would have loved to do it this year because we, we wanted, you know, the sixth graders had experience with sort of a one-to-one and now there, there's a year gap. But we, you know, it was better, we thought it was better to delay it and do it right. Right, than rush it through and not have thought about, you know, and there'll still be things we're gonna learn.
Well, um, just a quick question related. I know we've talked about this before. What grade levels are gonna be expected to use technology for their MCAS?
Four and eight.
So this year is four and eight. Over the next two, three years, um, they're phasing in more grade levels that are expected to do computer-based testing.
By nineteen, everybody, right?
By nineteen, everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, so grade four and eight, but.
We're, we're using Pembroke's laptops for the MCAS this year. We're, we met the other day on that and how we were gonna, um.
And so what, they'll come over to the high school? They'll come over to the middle school?
Yes, we're gonna take, we're gonna, yes, that's what'll happen for the eighth grade.
Fourth grade, because?
Fourth grade, we're gonna use, um, the iPads that, so we're gonna do a rotation of not only the iPads we have, but the, um, there's a, a ca, there's a cart. Uh, and we're going to borrow from the fifth and sixth grade on a rotating basis so that.
To prepare the kids.
So that at least once, what, what did we decide, Margaret? Was it once a week or two, no, two days a week?
Within Pembroke?
Yeah, Pembroke.
Within Pembroke.
Two days a week. They, they were gonna have them accessible for the day.
Okay, okay. And then they'd be obviously using them.
Yeah, and Mary Ann, I, I thought that was very interesting, listened to what Mary Ann said, that, you know, based on the way that the kids are getting exposed to it in their technology classes and, and that they're, they already have a bit of a proficiency with the kind of skills that, um, we wanna make sure that they have the chance to, to know.
Can we talk about network at the middle high school? Um, and I think I'm looking at Peter. I am looking at Peter, I know that. Where, you know, I know the network was down this week and like, I know the Sonic Wall, the firewall problem. The network has to work for this to work. I guess my. Um, I guess my, here again, without, without a Wes, without a, the network tech, at least for now, do we have, and I know we have Barry and Paul and you and Jared and Peter, but is that?
And Mike.
Adequate to get it to work at the level, it just needs to work, you need to turn it on, and it needs to work. Um, and I know, like, the Apple TVs, I know it was kind of a, we spent most of this, of this year figuring out why they weren't working, and now they are, and that's great. Do we have, on September third, or whatever day we're gonna start school, they, it just needs to work. Do we have that capability?
Mm-hmm, I believe we do.
Yes.
Capability? Yeah, we, we always have the capability, is it gonna be working by then, uh, it, it, that, we don't have the days of the network kinda working along gone. So, when the network goes down like it did, we have to bring in somebody right away, because we don't even know what teachers are calling in sick anymore, because our phones are on the network now. It's something that is vital, so, yes, it's going to work. What, what we need to look at, though, is we're not gonna have enough bandwidth.
That's why we're waiting for E-rate.
When we completely, when the whole school has one of these devices. So, school districts all over the state are dealing with this, well, what we thought was plenty of bandwidth, and we have a hundred and fifty megabytes per second. Not gonna be enough.
But that's enough for the three fifty that we're pulling up.
Yes, it will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in, in our plan, cause this is in our strategic plan, and our plan is that when the E-rate money, that, that we'll use next year's E-rate money, to, to, to increase that, I know Wes was working with vendors, Comcast, and, you know, their vendors, he actually was researching a couple of vendors, he left all that contact information, Mike's following up. You know, to see, you know, how do we, how do we get that extra bandwidth, the most economically, you know, feasible way that we can, but we're, that's on our radar screen, we know, we know that beyond this first wave of, of, uh, iPads, you know, that it's quickly gonna become not enough.
We need to double it.
Yeah, which is the plan.
Which is why, isn't that one of the reasons why we didn't roll this out for this fall?
Well, part of it was, the network really wasn't in great shape, but that's what, that is right, we, we did this past summer, we literally reconfigured the network.
Yeah.
Updated the server.
We have, we have good equipment.
Yeah.
We might need some, some additional equipment, um, when we, uh, there's different ways to, to, um, increase the bandwidth and to manage the traffic. And, uh, the, it's probably gonna take an investment in some equipment to do that, um, but.
To do it right, you want it to be redundant.
Right.
So that if it goes down, you can proverbially flip a switch, and it goes right back up.
Yeah, but we, we, you need to manage the traffic.
Yeah.
It's like, um, and we have to make some decisions, you know, about, like, one of the things that some of the school districts are really being bought down is in YouTube. And so they have a channel just for that.
Just YouTube, yeah.
Yeah.
Where that's going out, so, that takes a little, uh, more equipment.
Yeah.
To do that, so, um, our network, really, we, we have, we have good hardware, and, um, we just, uh.
And with the configurations, that, I mean, there was, there was very confusing, it was very, the, the way it was configured was very confusing, and it, and it clearly wasn't, was inefficient.
Yeah, it's, it's a matter of managing the traffic.
It wasn't designed.
It wasn't designed, so they completely redesigned that, that network, so that, like Peter said, the, the hardware's solid. But we've known that down the road, the bandwidth was, you know, going to be our, gonna be our challenge, but we have a plan to try to, to get, to get that, to get in front of that.
Plus, it's, on the, on the internet connection, i- it's, you get E-rate for that.
Right, exactly.
So, we won't be paying the full ticket.
Right.
Right. But we're also, we also need to save the, and I guess it's year over year, but we need the E-rate for when all of these access points need to be replaced, like, we're, we do need to make, make sure that we're not spending that E-rate three times over.
Over and over, no, we can't, right, exactly.
I guess my, my last question is, well, I guess, two questions.
Okay.
Um, seventh grade, they're on a three-year lease, so now they have it for seven, eight, and nine, what's the plan for those kids when they get into tenth grade?
So, they have two options, they can re-up again, and they can start with a, a fresh, you know, new finance, or.
iPad Pro six.
iPad Pro, you know, whatever it is at that, at that time, or they can use the device that, that they have, one of the reasons that, um, Peter suggested to, to really go from the iPad Air two to the Pro is because it's, it is the most advanced tech that is offered right now, so that in those three years, it will still be relevant as, as much as a technol- piece of technology can be three years down the road. As opposed to getting something that's already a year old, that's already a model behind what they're currently making, so that when those seventh graders get to tenth grade, they're still gonna have something that, for all intents and purposes, can still be used for ten, eleven, twelve, if the family does not want to buy into another computer. Now, they, they may want to, and give that one that they now own to a little brother, or to a, you know, grandparent, or whoever, and get a new, you know, the newest, latest, and greatest machine, but that was the reasoning behind that.
And my, my last one, I guess, comes down to sort of the, the financing of it, is, and, and absolutely correct me if I'm wrong.
Please.
The school will be, the school district will be purchasing three hundred and fifty iPads, whatever that number is. The parents will essentially be paying us back over time for that.
Correct.
So, we are incurring three hundred and fifty times eight hundred and three dollars, whatever that number is, which is a really big number.
It's a really big number.
It's a, I mean, it's two hundred, it's a quarter of a million dollars.
Yes.
Um, what is, I was reading through the, the FACS contract, and, and they are not guaranteeing any payments, they are just a payment collection system.
Right.
If we collect a hundred dollars through them, they're not covering, you know, when Apple sends us our quarterly bill, or whatever it's gonna be. What is, what is our insurance that, that the math is gonna work?
Yeah.
I know we're trying to collect money in June to be in time for that first payment in October, November, whenever that is, but, this is, uh, that's a lot of money, and if it doesn't work, it, I assume it's gonna be a revolving account, it has, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would imagine it.
Just one more, Suzanne.
Other than hoping for the best, what's the, I don't know how to, how to phrase the question, but, that's a lot of hoping for the best.
Yeah, I mean. It's gotta be a safeguard for, you know, everybody paying up.
Yeah.
We thought the lunch.
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, we thought the lunch thing.
That's kinda, but that's kinda why we're hiring an outside agency to do it, because, you know, they'll be aggressive, we won't be having to chase people. You know, it's a contract that they're setting up with.
But they made very clear that they're not, and, and I wasn't at the meeting, but if you read the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
They made clear that they're not a collection agency, they're gonna ask for you to pay it, and if you don't pay it, you don't pay it.
Well, fair enough, but we think that because they're collecting it, and there's, you know, that, that, that likelihood is that parents, yeah, are gonna, we didn't have the bandwidth to do it ourselves, and we felt like doing it through them was, you know, going to be not only more ef- effective, but we thought that parents might take it more seriously, since it's, you know.
It's an outside entity, and, and I, and I get that.
Yeah, that's, that was our thought, anyway.
I guess I'm just mindful of, of the risk.
Yeah.
Involved.
Yeah, it's two hundred and eighty dollars.
It's a big risk.
It's, yeah, it's no, it's, I think, the indicators that we've gotten from out, you know, surveys, asking students and teachers and parents whether or not they, they wanna buy into this, and using the examples of the other nearby districts that are similar in demographic and population to Georgetown, that have been successful with one-to-one programs, that gives me a little ease to know that, you know, we're not gonna, you know, buy all these machines, and then have no, you know, have them sit in the closet, and then we're, you know, uh, you know, we're in the hole. Um, I, I feel that because all of the prep work has been done prior to this, and we're not just saying, everybody get iPads, but we can say, we've done the professional development, we've done the pilot with a small group of students and teachers, we have, you know, upgraded our bandwidth, and we're ready to do this now, and here's how it's going to help you, in all the ways that you heard today from teachers and students. I, I, I'm relatively confident that when we, we go forward to, to the community to say, this is what we wanna do, they'll, they'll be on board.
I feel like, I feel like they're signing a contract.
With all due respect, though, to that, we've looked at districts that are comparable in, you know, our demographics, that don't have issues with lunch. You know, with, 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 right, with getting the lunch money, um, that is, that, to me, is my biggest concern.
But I feel like it's a little different than that, in the sense that they don't have to do it, right, I mean, they, if they sign a contract, then it's sort of like promising you're going to do it, with, for, lunch isn't like that, right, you, you can show up, and your kid can get lunch, and you can have a balance. I, I think it's a little different, this, people have to literally say, I'm going to sign on to this, I'm going to put my, you know, my signature on this, I'm making a promise that I'm gonna do it, and so I, I feel like it's different.
And when we have.
I'm not saying we can't have people who default, not saying that, but I, I'm just.
Carol, I know it's too late for this, but.
Yeah.
Because I don't remember.
Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't we have allowed them to bring their own device in?
They can bring their own device in.
So.
The reason we wanted to do this is because, as you saw tonight.
I don't mean just an iPad, I'm talking like if they wanted to bring it.
Oh, any, any device, and they can, they can do that.
So they can, so they can choose to do that.
They can do that, yep, absolutely, I think the reason we want.
They're not bringing an iPad, they're not necessarily gonna be able to do it with the rest of the classes.
Right, because they won't have apps on a Windows.
Right, but they can bring a, any device in for the purposes of working.
And the value add of, of everyone using the same platform is, is huge, I totally get that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
I guess I'm, I'm, it's eight hundred bucks, we're, like, we're, 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 we're asking people to spend eight hundred bucks. Whether it's divided by three, or two, or one.
Yep.
Well, I think the majority of parents are going to want their child to be on par with everybody else. More so than saying, well, this is all we have, bring this to school.
I don't know, it works, it works in the district I'm in, everybody brings their own, and they have all different types, and it works.
Are they using apps?
They're using apps.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how they're doing that, if they're, you know, if you have.
They have all different, all different platforms, and they're all using apps, and they all use Google, and it works.
Yeah, we don't wanna discourage a, a, anyone who has their own device, that feels more comfortable on that, that they, you know, are accustomed to, this is the option that we wanna give the majority of our community, so that, you know, we can continue doing the, the work that we've already started, and, and a platform that is the most accessible, and kind of easy to adopt for, for everyone involved, but we're not discouraging.
But I think when presented, they, the parents should know that there are these options.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah, absolutely, that makes sense.
Yeah, so that, that's the thing, too, then, it's difficult in figuring out how ma- how much you really have, how many you have to purchase.
That would be one of the purposes of having those meetings, either in January or in the spring, is, you know, we're not gonna buy iPads for people that we know aren't gonna get, or don't want them, so, you know, to, to.
Right.
It's not gonna, that's less of a risk that we're taking, if we know that we have X number of families that are opting out, or bringing their own device, we're not purchasing those machines.
We're not gonna say, we're gonna purchase three hundred machines, and then hopefully get three hundred people that want them.
I really wish we had a parent forum before this.
Yeah.
Just, just to get an idea, you know, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, I really wish we did, ju- just so I can get a sense of. But is it too late, I mean, is this a done deal, is it too late, can we still have a parent forum first, just to see what they're interested, what their interest is?
You can do whatever you want, we're, we're mindful of the timing, right, we're, we're trying to, um, you know, again, what, what, our plan was, if you're asking, do we have a forum, and then people come to the forum and say, we think it's a lousy idea. Because we don't know that everybody that comes to the forum represents everybody else, so, so I, I'm just, whatever the purpose of your forum is, right?
It's not a good cross-section.
If the, if it's to say, hey, this is what we're thinking of doing, this is what it's gonna cost, you know, so, is it an information, we were just thinking that it made sense to have the school committee approve it first, saying, you know, I, I mean, you could withdraw your support, if you see in January that so many people are coming out of the woodwork, yelling and screaming, saying, this is a dumb idea, and what do you think you're doing? You know, we can withdraw the support, we're not ordering any of the machines until such time, we're just recommending.
But there is flexibility within this.
But as educators, we're recommending to you, as the policymakers, that we feel that in our strategic plan, in the work that we are trying to do with students, that we feel that a one-to-one initiative is something that is important, we've been working on it for multiple years now. So, our hope is that parents will support it, obviously, if they don't, then we're not gonna, it's not gonna be a successful initiative. But with, like Conso, we're only gonna buy them for the people who say that they're, they're gonna want them.
I mean, I, I think this is a very well-thought-out proposal, and, you know, if you're looking for support and a vote to approve this proposal, can I, I move that we.
I mean, you can do, you can approve it in February, it's just.
Can remove the question?
I was gonna say, what, what are you, what are you, I guess, what are you asking for tonight, to approve holding a parent forum in January?
No, I'm asking, I, I think we're asking, that's why we put this proposal in front of you.
Who are you asking to approve?
The proposal.
Cause we wanted you to have an opportunity to look at it from, you know, from, this is why we're doing it, and then to literally say, we, as a school committee, endorse this proposal, going forward with a one-to-one. Uh, in, in other words, this pricing, the, the whole setup.
Suppe nuts.
Well, I, and then we go out to the community and say, okay, we're, you know, this is what we're, this is what we're planning, and come to this information night, give us your questions, you know, and, and we, you know, this is what we're asking from you as parents, and then, that, that's how we were asking to have it done, we can certainly restructure it, if that's, if you're, that's how you're.
Keeping in mind, you don't have to.
You don't have to do it.
This is not a mandate for any, we, we, we cannot, you know, it's not a mandate, you can.
And use different devices.
Yep, there are, there are options for, for anyone to, to, to buy into this as, as much or as little as they want, we are, obviously, you know, we want to be a one-to-one school, because we see the benefits for our students and for our teachers, um, as you heard a lot of examples tonight, but ultimately, the decision is on the family to, you know, make that, make that choice.
And that's why we were looking at multiple options, right, so we didn't say to people, you have to go, go out and buy this machine, like, right now, to have in place on September, and it's sort of all on you, if people, you know, are so inclined, they can pay twenty-five dollars, right, every month. You know, for the period of time, right, so, I think that's, that was what we were trying to figure out, is like, well, gee, what would parents care about, right, and cost is definitely something, we agree one hundred percent. And some people had asked us, ma- like, ma- I think, I think Margaret said, that at her school council, when they were talking about this, someone asked about, you know, getting this information out sooner than later to people, because, you know, if people wanted to actually purchase something, you know, for Christmas.
Oh, right.
They would know, you know, what, what specs to do, yeah.
What specs to do, or, yeah.
Or to hold off on, oh, purchase, because they can get it cheaper to the school.
Mike, do you have a, a comment question?
Yeah, so, on behalf of the teachers, um, Michael, I'm glad you brought up, uh, the financial component, um, and just, just for a point of clarification, um, did you say, is essentially that the district will front the money, and then will be reimbursed through parents over a certain period of time, is that the, basically, the plan?
Well, we'd lease them.
Oh, so, they'd be leased, and, so the, the lease would be, the lease would be made up through parents funding?
A thousand is the first, is our.
Essentially.
Our first payment is.
So tell me that.
Is there a time?
First payment in November's, I'm sorry.
Is there a time period that's placed on that, where that, that lease has to be made up by a certain amount of time?
It's a one, two, or a three, they can either buy it outright, pay it over the course of two years, or pay it over the course of three years.
Our commitment is, we have a, a, an initial lease payment that's due in November, which is why we would want people to make their first payment in June.
Okay, right, then what would the schedule be after that, do you know?
The, I'm, I'm sorry.
What's the payment schedule after that?
For the district?
After Nov- yeah.
Annually.
So, it's a, it's.
I, I think it is annually, but I'd wanna verify that for sure.
That's a big check. Right, it, that's, that, the reason why I bring that up is because.
Well, they collected, they collected through FACS, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
Speaking, speaking on behalf of, of the teachers, you know, uh, we're in the first year of a three-year contract, you know, so, in, in two years, we're gonna be renegotiating another contract. We know that there've been financial difficulties, um, I just didn't know if this could be something that could add to that. Um, I mean, I know that, yeah, it, it seems like it's, it's worked out in a way where it's, it's almost like a, a user-funded scenario.
It is, that's exactly what it is, Mike.
Uh, however, as, as Barbie, as you mentioned, we have seen with smaller user-funded situations, such as, you know, school lunch, if, if there aren't consequences, you know, that are upheld, um, you know, you could all, you could start accruing costs very quickly, so.
Take their lap- laptop back, that's what's gonna happen.
So.
What I actually, at, at the Hamilton lineup, would I like what they did, and, and I don't, I get, I shouldn't say I liked what they did, but if parents got behind. What I actually, at the Hamilton lineup, what I liked what they did, and and I don't, I, I shouldn't say I liked what they did, but if parents got behind through the device management system, they could just shut off.
Right, yeah.
And, but they could turn it on if Jimmy needed it for a test that day, like, it wasn't, it wasn't totally draconian, but there was
But that's the thing, when you just have you take the iPad away
But not actually get the money.
That, you know, you, you wouldn't, you'd shut the app off.
But, but, so, but that's the thing, if we, uh, they don't pay, then we take it away or we, or we shut it off. But then there are people up front that are opting out and they're getting an iPad, like, just from us giving it to them.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna have the same accessibility, right, they're not gonna have the same accessibility, and it's not gonna, the, there's, the ones, the new ones we're buying will be the same, but the ones we have that we're going to loan to people are not as current.
They're the Air tubes, are they Air tubes?
Yeah.
Is that
They're an older model, they, you know
Those are the ones that the opt-outs will receive?
Yes, yeah, just to complete their, their schoolbook on the day-to-day, on the day-to-day basis, they're also not buying into something that will, at the end of those payment plans, will be theirs, their machine. You know, we're not leasing it and then taking it back after they, it's, it's theirs once they've paid it off. So, if they're buying on a payment by a day or two, they make that payment, they're, they're right back in it to, to make sure that they can do everything they need to do.
Okay. Personally, again, this is, it's ten minutes after ten.
Yes, late.
Yeah, you know, I support this. I believe that as educators, you're telling us what you believe is the best for our students, I totally respect that. Uh, I just wanna be clear that I am very concerned about the money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think the committee members would share that, and that's, it's, it's just concerning to me, because whenever you ha- you know, you, you just, you don't have to be mindful of, of that, and we have to be mindful of, of
Ab- absolutely.
The situation too, so, so we vote, with that being said, um, I will make a motion.
Do we?
I wanna bang my head against the wall.
I saw this, I'm like, I'm
Do we need to also create a revolving account? Or is that a down-the-road thing? Well, I guess what are we actually, what do we need to vote on today?
Why don't we, um, why don't we cre- we're just creating a revolving account at the next, at the next meeting, right? We, cause then we, we, we wanna get the language for that and make sure that's all right for you.
Well, I'm gonna do the best with my language, cause there isn't one in here, so I will make a
I know, I can't believe that, I don't know what I was thinking.
To approve the Georgetown Middle High School iPad one-to-one proposal presented this evening by Mr. McDonald.
With the amended pricing structure.
With, yes, exactly, with the amended pricing structure, thank you.
So moved.
Couldn't get that out fast enough.
Whatever you like, Laura.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So we will get this information out, start getting, start pushing this information out now.
I hope Colin didn't think we really beat it that, that bad, but
I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion, that's how we, that's why we're here to
Your job is to make sure that, you know, you, you represent the public, we're, we're fine with that.
We'll make sure that the parents, and you'll make sure that the parents understand the flexibility of their options and
We're not gonna make sure that
Are you gonna use, I mean, I know, I assume the answer is yes, Hamilton Wettum's website is awesome.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or, we should do something like that.
Yeah, Hamilton Wettum's website is awesome.
Oh, oh, for the, for the, yeah, definitely, that, that's a great idea, we could definitely, um
Yeah, and they were, when we went, they were, they were pretty happy to say, take whatever you want from us and we're happy to give it to you.
You know what, so I'll, I'll do a blog, I'll, I'll do a blog on this, and then we can start working on the, the website, just to get, you know, everything up there. We'll um, start advertising the parent meeting, the parent forum, get that on the announcements right away. So that'll be a good start, right? And then we'll, uh, we'll go from there.
Yep, okay, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sorry to keep you so long.
Well done, yeah.
So do we have, is there anything else, we have just two pieces of, thank you, Barbie.
Yeah, we are just gonna do that quickly.
These last two little things.
We're gonna do the, uh, acceptance of, uh, the donations, right?
Very generous donation.
Yes, so we did, are they anonymous, yes, so we did receive
Well, one is.
One anon- well, are, are they both anonymous, I know we got two.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have received, um, two monetary donations from anonymous community members that would like the funds to be used for, uh, towards the food service bill, which again is very, very generous, and it just goes to show how generous our community is, we appreciate that. So I will make a motion to accept, uh, a two hundred dollar, um, as well as a one hundred and eighteen dollar anonymous donation, which will be used to offset outstanding food services.
So moved, second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we also received a very generous donation in the amount of six hundred and eighty-five dollars from the Georgetown Democratic Town Committee. Um, and they would like that, um, to be used as well towards the arrears for food services, which again, that's very, very generous of this organization to do that, and we appreciate it. Um, so I will make a motion to accept six hundred and eighty-five dollar donation from the Georgetown Democratic Town Committee to be used to offset outstanding food services balance for famines and arrears.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, that was very, very generous. Um, so, with that being said, I, um, have to say that unfortunately we do require an executive session this evening, so
It's
Do the motion for the side letters?
Oh, yeah, just
Oh, I, yes, seeing that I just
These are stipends, we've already got the positions, these are just, need to be done every year.
Where are your motions, Laura, are they in here, yes, thank you, okay.
I would, I would love, before the motion, I would love to see an accounting of, of what we're using. I know we're, we're, these are ones that are on the contract and I get it, but
Like what clubs we're running?
What clubs we're running, where we are in that sixty thousand dollars, we keep, we keep approving and I just wanna make sure that we're
Right.
Able to cover that.
Able to keep approving.
Okay, I'll, I can definitely tell you what clubs we're running, and you wanna look at the, um, like a running balance. Cause, cause basically, um, some of the clubs aren't full year, so people like put their stipends in at the end of the year, so they may not be a full-year club, so I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can get put together for you.
Thank you.
It's a good point. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen stipends for the following clubs, which, first one is Anime for one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, Art National Honor Society for one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, the Game Club for six hundred dollars.
Art is seven oh six in the actual letter.
Oh, where is it?
Oh, two positions.
Um, Game Club for six hundred dollars, Musical Director for one thousand nine fifty-eight, and the Assistant Music Director for one thousand five forty-five.
So moved, discussion?
Can, can we just clarify the, there are two Art National Honor Society? Oh, each for two positions, I'm sorry.
Two physicians, yes.
It was in the, um, yes, okay.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Laura, that's good, right? Okay, so, at this point in time, at ten twenty, I will make a motion to adjourn, we do need to have an executive session, so at this point, we will go into executive session under chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, to discuss legal issues, we will not be returning to open session. Vote call, vote, please.
Aye.
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 Great, have a good night, thank you.